Deputy City Clerk Raymond Wilson, please take the role.
Yes, Alderman Revelle.
Aye, here, whatever.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Fisk.
I think she's here but had to step away.
Okay, Alderman Braceley. Alderman Braceley.
Same thing, I believe, Eddie.
Okay, Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Bruce Simmons.
Here.
And Alderman Suffertin. Alderman Suffertin.
I think he may have stepped away. Eddie, I see his screen on, it's muted. So he may have just stepped away for a second. But he is, he is here this evening.
Hold up.
That's everyone. So welcome, everybody, to the Monday, July 13th, 2020 Evanston City Council meeting. We have all of our aldermen present this evening. I know Alderman Fisk and Suffertin are here, they've been at the committee meetings and they'll be, they'll be here in a minute. As I've been doing lately, I just want to give everyone a quick update on two topics. One is the pandemic and where things stand on that front, and then with the deep dive that we're doing as a community into policing. So in terms of the pandemic and COVID-19, in Evanston, the news continues to be positive. Today, for instance, we had only three new cases and zero deaths. Our seven-day moving average in terms of new cases is two a day, so that continues to be really positive news for us. Overall, we've got 820 cases and sadly 71 fatalities. Those fatalities have really slowed down, obviously, as the number of cases has slowed down. As everyone knows, we are in Phase Four of Governor Pritzker's Restore Illinois Plan. The data that we all need to be watching and paying attention to is our statewide data and the data within this region here, the Chicagoland region and the Northeast region. On that front, the data isn't as good. We have seen our seven-day moving average at the state level increase 52% since our low of 621 cases on June 18th. So as of yesterday, on July 12th, our seven-day moving average as a state was 946 cases. So that's a 52% increase. We are still green on all the metrics that Governor Pritzker's team is, is tracking. And one of those metrics, it's a really important metric, is the positivity rate. The positivity rate statewide is at 3%, and that's really good news for us. But it is creeping up, and what we're seeing is we're seeing the number, a disproportionate number of positive cases be among young people. So those that are teenagers or in their, in their twenties. And it is so important that all of us follow the directives of the public health authorities. This can quickly escalate, and we can find ourselves back into Phase Three, or even worse, into Phase Two. We're all at a, under a stay-at-home order. None of us want that, but we're watching and seeing what's happening in other states. I know the governor's office is watching this data carefully. I know there are people here in Evanston that are concerned, and have emailed me or emailed their alderman, asking us to take certain measures. I'll say what I said at the beginning of this disaster, is that we will make decisions the same way and follow the lead of the governor's office in making decisions which are fact-based, science-based, expert-informed decision-making. And that's, that's what we've done, and that's what we'll continue to do. So again, here in Evanston, the news is good at the state level, the numbers are creeping up. The positivity rate, again, is good. The positivity rate statewide is good at 3%. In Evanston, it is about 1.5%. So 1.5% of the people being tested. And we're not testing less people, by the way. We're continuing to test a high number of people. Testing in this state relative to others is, is doing really well, but there still isn't enough testing out there. I still hear from folks that are trying to get tested, and it's taking too long, and they're waiting too long. So there's still work to be done there. That's, yeah, that's sort of, that's sort of an update. In terms of hospitalizations here in this area, we've got about 40 people in the hospital with COVID-19 in this area, and those aren't all Evanston folks, because they could come from anywhere in the region. So let's keep up the good work that we're doing. Everybody should know this by now, mask when you're indoors. Any, any place, when you're outdoors and you can't maintain six feet distance, you should be, you should be wearing a mask. If you're going to our beach, and I know a lot of people are going to the beach, you have to wear a mask to come onto, onto the beach. So that's important. We have reduced the number of people that are on the beaches to a 50% capacity there. I do know that the governor's office and the state agencies are taking a look at all of the guidelines because of the statistics in that seven-day moving average at a state level increasing. The one other data point I did want to share is the infection rate. The infection rate is how many people, one person with COVID-19, how many other people they'll infect? You want to have that infection rate below 1.0, and we were below that number for a while. That has crept, crept up. And so that infection rate right now, here in the state of Illinois, is now 1.12. And I can tell you, a few weeks ago, it was down to like 0.8. And if you look at the states where there's a real outbreak, that number is, is much higher, that infection rate. If you have teenagers or you have young adults, please stress to them that, you know, it's imperative that they take the same precautions and procedures that you are taking or other people are taking. Because all it takes is for a young person to have it, they come home and transfer it to other people in the house, and then it becomes much more dangerous if they're transferring it to people that have a pre-existing health condition or are over the age of 65. So that's, that's an update there. Alderman Fleming, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, do you have any update on our assisted living facilities or senior homes? I've had some people ask questions about that.
Yeah, so I've got the last situation report. So in Evanston, the Emergency Operations Center is still, still active. We operate on a seven-day period now, and so it meets on Wednesday. So I'm looking at last Wednesday's report. And the, the numbers at our senior center continue to look good, just like all our numbers citywide. And again, hospitalizations are way down, so that's, that's a good sign. Overall, again, if we look at the overall numbers, we've had, we've had 230 resident cases within our senior living centers. And I mentioned upfront, we've got 820 cases. So our, that's running, you know, a little more than 25% of the cases have been in senior, in senior living centers. But we haven't had, well, we've had some, some bad situations at a few of our senior living centers, absolutely, in terms of fatalities and the number of cases. We haven't recently seen a big spike in those numbers, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, one more thing. Can you speak to the travel restrictions and the difference between those at the city of Chicago and the state?
Yeah, Alderman Bruce Simmons, I don't, I don't know much other than, I know that the, the city of Chicago placed travel restrictions on people that are coming in from certain, certain states, where there's a lot of cases right now. And so if they're traveling into Chicago, they are sort of self-certifying or agreeing that when they come here, they will self-isolate for a period, for a period of time. And it's sort of the honor system. There's no way to, to sort of monitor that. I'm not aware if the state has done those same restrictions. I know other states have, like, like New York State, I believe, and Massachusetts. But this was something that Chicago did. I did have a few residents come to me and say, hey, Mayor, Evanston needs to do this. And my response to that is similar to it's been on a lot of these issues that, you know, the governor's office has, you know, the most resources and the experts and people that are literally working 24/7. And, you know, because of the philosophy that they're taking, which is science-based, fact-based, expert-based, you know, I think it's important for us as a city to rely on, rely on them and their expertise. So we haven't, here in Evanston, put anything in place that tells people, hey, if you're coming from one of these other locations, you need to. I would obviously advise all of our residents to exercise really good judgment. If you want to keep our community safe and your family safe, it's best to, again, abide by all the directives of the public health officials. Limit your travel to the extent that you can, certainly to these more high-risk states where there's a high number of cases. Second update I wanted to give folks was on the policing series that we're doing, the deep dive that we're doing into, into policing. There's movements going on all around the country and here in Evanston as well about looking at police budgets and police operations, whether that be use of force, whether that be the equipment that our police are using. And so I set up a series of those conversations. Today, we just had our second one, and it was on the Evanston Police Department budget. That will be on Channel 16 for people to see it. It'll run several times, just like their city council meetings do. You can also find it on Facebook, on the city's Facebook page. And, and it was a good, I thought it was a good session. We, as a city council, are going to be talking police budgets and policing at our next meeting on July 27th. So that'll be an opportunity for us to do it. My hope with these is to share information, to create a foundation of knowledge for all of us to work off of as we're making those decisions. When people are talking about defunding the police, just so everybody's on the same page, what they're talking about is reducing the amount of money that you spend on policing and reallocating that money into other areas of your community that, over time, would pay a benefit, so they wouldn't have to have as much policing. And so that could be in the areas, investments in the area of housing, workforce development. And so we had that session today. We had a Northwestern University sociology professor, Andrew Papa Christos, who joined us, whose, one of his areas of expertise is on policing around the country. And he mentioned an organization that I just wanted to share with folks, because one of the things that you may want to look at is, okay, how many officers do we have per capita, you know, so how many officers relative to the number of people that we have in town? And compare that to other communities around the country. And there's a really good organization that's doing that, that called Vera, V E R A dot org. If you go to vera.org and you go to publications, and then there's a publication, What Policing Costs in America's Big Cities. You will see a map of the country, and you can, you can click on those cities. Evanston, we have one officer in Evanston for every 530 residents. As a point of comparison, the city of Chicago has one officer for every 183 residents there. So it's worth spending a little time at, at that website, and you can at least get a, a sense of other communities. Other ones that are similar to us in terms of ratio is Fargo, North Dakota, Raleigh, excuse me, Fargo, North Dakota, Raleigh, North Carolina, San Jose, San Diego had similar ratios that Evanston had. So I thought that was, I thought that was interesting. So we're going to talk more about police operations as a council at our next meeting. The series will continue that I'm hosting. The next one will be next Monday. We are at noon, it'll be live, and that will be with Evanston Police Department, Northwestern University, ETHS, and District 65. And we're going to talk about the kind of coordination, collaboration that goes on. We've talked about resource officers, and whether this is good or bad, and we'll have a good conversation about that. Then that following Monday, at our next, the day of our next city council meeting, Monday, July 27th, we'll be having a session on use of force in body cameras here in Evanston. And then on August 3rd, we will have another one about the complaint process and finding some recommendations for some past work. And then I will, may add a couple more sessions in August that we will do. The timeline for all of this is, again, this is setting a foundation for conversations that we can have as a community come September and October, when the city manager presents her budget to the city council, and we talk about it. And in years past, again, there's never really been a, a lot of residents that have come and wanted to talk about the police budget. And so this year, we will, we'll have that kind of conversation. So that's, I just wanted to give an update on, that's where we are there. And then the last thing is we have a proclamation that I gave. I'm not going to read it this month, or at this meeting, but it was a proclamation declaring July Parks and Recreation Month. And I can't think of a better month than July, because so many people are out there using them, and even in the pandemic, many people are out there enjoying our parks and our recreation that we offer, and it is different this year. Summer camps are different this year, beaches are a little different, and there's all sorts of rules. But we have a terrific Parks and Rec Department, people that are working incredibly hard on our behalf. In years past, they have been finalists for an award, and they are, again, this year, up for that award. They have not taken home the gold. They've come close, and so we're going to keep our fingers crossed. But I think interim manager Storey, I think we've got a little video we wanted to share with folks just about the Parks Department.
Yes, we do. It's the submission video for this year's gold medal process, which we won't find out if we want or not until October, but we're hoping that the third time's a charm. With that, I'll hand it over to Lawrence and Anderson to play the video.
Thank you, Mr. Storey. Luke or Anderson, you guys ready for the video?
Yes, I can play it.
All right, thanks. Look around you. Who do you see? When I look around, I see people who look like you. I see people who look like me. I see babies and teenagers. I see younger and older adults. I see people of different shapes and sizes, different religions, different hair color and clothing styles. I see people with different skin color, which means I see an amazing community. Hello, my name is Lawrence Hemingway, and I am the director of the City of Evanston Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department. Here in Evanston, we are guided by NRPA's Three Pillar Initiatives. And our department is stepping forward even more boldly to strengthen our critical connection to our community.
Social equity is only lip service until you activate them with action. Ever since Parks, Recreation, and Community Service Divisions, achievements of the past must be met and followed up with continuous unwavering action in the present and the future. Our Special Recreation Division remains committed to having many of our special Olympic athletes, coaches, and inclusion aides be ambassadors who work in the Evanston community every day, impacting lives and travel the state, educating and encouraging others to live a healthy lifestyle. For 43 years, the city of Evanston, through its Parks, Recreation, and Community Service Department, has supported an in-house African-American theater company. The multi-award-winning Fleetwood Jordan Theater produces plays, concerts, and special events exploring the African-American and African diaspora experience while garnering the most diverse audience in the Chicagoland theater community. Keeping our older adult community actively engaged through refreshing, innovative, and interactive programming has always been a part of our department's DNA. Physical fitness, social services, arts, crafts, music, dance, and language workshops, along with fantastic lunch service programs at the award-winning Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, continue to grow in popularity as a significant part of our community continues to grow a little older. We are also aware that we are not all on equal footing here in Evanston. We are actively reaffirming our mission and dedicating our resources to destroying the institutional barriers that prevent too many of our residents from participating in all of our department's programs by offering fee assistance, scholarships, complimentary beach tokens, and transportation support to all who need them. Promoting and maintaining health and wellness in our community is paramount to our department's overall mission. The new Robert Crown Community Center and Library, and the newly renovated Fleetwood Jordan Community Center offer creative opportunities to provide a multitude of services. Each facility is unique and provides a combination of traditional athletic programs such as hockey, ice and roller skating, basketball, soccer, tennis, baseball, lacrosse, and football. But these facilities also offer library services, after-school youth services, state-licensed childcare, welding studios, art workshops, and a monthly free produce mobile. We never take for granted what each member of our community is facing during these challenging times. We have partnered with the local school districts, the Greater Chicago Food Dispensary, Age Options, Northwestern University, and local grocery stores to provide over 7,000 meals per month to individuals and families in need of support. The Evanston Ecology Center offers environmental programming, including tours of their Four Hive Apary, a community garden program, climate change education, and advocacy for environmental protection. Non-partner partnerships hosting joint pollinator education programs and certifying seven wildlife habitats at our own sites has helped Evanston earn the National Wildlife Federation's Community Wildlife Habitat Certification.
The City of Evanston Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department commits each day to servicing the people of our community and protecting our natural resources, creating an atmosphere of safety, compassion, and pride, where everyone can enjoy the beautiful shores of Lake Michigan and the tree-filled parks, experience the rich cultural arts scene, and most importantly, caring for one another. Over the past several months, we have all experienced some level of trauma. And we have also learned that together, we can make the impossible possible through compassion, dedication, and steadfastness to make this world a better place. Thank you, and have a great day.
Yay. Yay. Fabulous.
No, no doubt you should win the gold medal this year.
Absolutely. For an Academy Award.
Hey, who was the narrator, Lawrence?
Mr. Mayor, that is Tim Rose.
Oh, it was Tim.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Great.
So I just wanted to say, you know, we're real excited. We appreciate, you know, the council's support, city manager Storey, as well as the mayor, you know, we appreciate everybody's support through it. You know, we worked very hard to, especially this summer, trying to get back to some sense of normalcy. So hopefully, the video just shows some of the things that we do, it's a small portion of what we do. But we appreciate all your support in trying to help us get back to a sense of normalcy. So we're going to do our best, and hopefully this year, we can bring home the gold.
Great. Good, good luck, and we appreciate everyone's flexibility in the Parks and Rec Department to help us this summer.
All right.
Yeah, I think Alderman Fisk may have something.
I, I do. Thank you, Lawrence, for that. I thought that was wonderful. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I watched your program today at noon. I thought that was fabulous. And I'm so glad that you're dealing with these issues that are so emotionally charged, but dealing with them in a professional and positive and just informative way. I, I thought you did a great job, and I'm looking forward to the continuing conversations. I hope everyone will listen, and I'm hoping that we can put them, somewhere combine them, so that we can point folks who are writing to us by email, we can point to the page, and so anyone who may have missed it can, you know, check in on all of the meetings, you know, online in a very easy way to understand. So thank you for that. It is just, it's perfect, and I know it takes a lot of time and staff time to do that, but it's really helpful, I think, to the continuing conversation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. All right, that wraps up my announcements under Mayor. Alderman Wilson, though, I did forget at the beginning, do we need to have a motion to have this meeting virtually? Or I wasn't sure if that changed with the new legislation that the governor?
I think we should do that. I guess it's good we didn't vote on anything. I, I forgot, because we just did a meeting. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we conduct our business meeting tonight pursuant, and suspend the rules to allow us to conduct a meeting. Forgive the dogs, conduct the meeting by the Zoom software service remotely pursuant to the governor's prior directives relating to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Okay, thank, thank you.
And then we need to call the role.
Deputy City Clerk Gomez, could you just take the role on that, please?
Yes, Alderman Revelle. Was that a yes? Alderman Revelle?
Aye. Can you not hear me?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braceley. Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Bruce Simmons.
Aye.
And Alderman Suffertin.
He's here, but Scott, Scott decided, let's see him there. Okay, so the motion, motion passes the Evanston City Council to hold this meeting virtually per the rules issued by Springfield in the light of the pandemic. We're now going to move to city manager announcements. Interim manager Storey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two short announcements. The first one is that we are changing the hours of access to the sand areas of the beach. So as many of you know, we staff the beach and we have it open for swimming from 10, 10:00 or 10:30 in the morning until 7:30 at night. That is not changing. The swimming hours of the beach will stay the same. But what we're, what we're encountering lately is a desire for people to enter the water after the lifeguards have left, which is an unsafe situation, and we want to deter people from doing that. So right now, we're going to be changing the hours of the sand area to close at 9:00 PM instead of 11:00 PM. That doesn't change the park hours of the green space, so if people want to continue to participate in activities at the parks, they're welcome to do that until 11:00 PM, but we will be closing access to the sand at 9:00. So kind of definitely safe. I know that there's a lot more people accessing the beach now because of the hot weather that's been sustained over the past couple of weeks. So we did have a tragic drowning a couple of last week, and I want to prevent anything like that from happening again in the future. So people, please use your due diligence, do not enter the water if there's not a lifeguard present, and please adhere to the guidelines that we've set forth. So that is the first announcement. The second announcement is, there has been a few other area communities who have decided to start doing their meetings in person, their city council meetings, in various ways that may or may not work for us. This has been a question that's come up over the past month, and I'm going to be putting it on the Rules Committee agenda for August for us to discuss it. I'm not sure that any of the methods that are currently being used for in-person meetings make sense for Evanston, but I would like for the council to share their opinions and thoughts on what makes sense for us going forward, and if we just continue to do remote meetings for the foreseeable future, or if we do some, some kind of different variation. So just so the public knows, we'll talk about that at Rules Committee next month. Those are my announcements. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And just for people that are watching, the Rules Committee will be the first Monday in August that we'll be having that. I'm not sure if it's that date. I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it's the first Monday that we'll do the Rules. All right, Deputy City Clerk Gomez, do we have any communication updates from the clerk's office? office?
No, Mayor Hagerty, no announcements.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, then we're going to turn to public comment tonight. We have, and Luke, you'll let me know if there's additional people, but the list that I received, we had seven residents that had signed up for public comment this evening. As everyone knows, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment, no more than three minutes per person. So this evening, if we have less than 15 people, everyone will get up to three minutes if you need it. So the speakers this evening, I'll just share the order of all of them so you know, but we've got Linda Del Bos, Nicholas Davis, Mike Basilko, Leana Rene Wallace, Ray Friedman, Doreen Price, and Brett Hellenbrandt will be our speakers. And then Luke, you can let me know if anybody else signs up, and I'll add them to the end if anyone else has signed up there. So we will start off with Linda Del Bos, and then it'll be Nicholas Davis and Mike Basilko. Welcome, Linda.
Okay, good evening, good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Couple of things I would like to speak with you about. The economics development department, Alderman Wilson, will be speaking or bringing up ED2 with the Chicago North Shore Business Bureau. I know they're getting $41,000, and I understand that's less than what they have allocated for 2020 budget, along with Downtown Evanston is receiving $50,000 for trash removal and marketing. As president of the Evanston Lennox Business Alliance, I am asking to work with the Downtown Evanston and help market besides their zone. So we've got several letting businesses are over their zone, but if they can kind of collaborate in marketing for them and attach their information to their newsletters, I think that this money for marketing, I really, we need to really look and see where that money's going. And also the trash removal, I was believing that the City of Evanston took care of trash removal. I didn't think that the organization themselves had to pay for their own trash removal. Number two, amnesty program. Luke and I have been talking about an amnesty program. 2017, I believe, was quarter one was the last amnesty program that Wilson had told me about, Alderman Wilson. But there was, according to Luke, it wasn't successful, so they were not thinking, the city was not thinking about doing it again. Being in the media, I'm probably one of the first people to know about everything, and I didn't hear about it then. So I was told over the weekend that the boot roundup would begin today. Luke spoke with me via email and said it may be next week. I don't think we should have any boot roundup until after the pandemic. I do believe in an amnesty program, and we need at least 30 days for our residents to come in and pay their ticket. I also offered free advertising and free promotion to work hard and get people in to pay their tickets. I don't believe that it should be, community members right now, especially the black and brown, were hit hard with COVID, that they should be worried about missing or losing their car as well. We know how the fees are a domino effect. So I'd like for you to reconsider and think about amnesty programs being put in place and be the heroes that you are and create a universe circle to get these tickets and citations paid off, okay? So what is the process behind it? So I'd like to follow up with Luke. I responded back to Luke and said, what's our next step? We're also talking about the digital divide, but first, I'd like to talk about these tickets since they're hot and heavy, okay? Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Nicholas Davis, and then Mike Basilko, then Leana Rene Wallace.
Evening, everybody. So I wanted to address the mayor's continued conversations on policing. I listened in today. Mayor Hagerty said that once he's holding me session, one reason he's holding me session is to learn. I wanted to know what specifically, he was trying to figure out what he wanted to learn more about, because I know that Evanston Fight for Black Lives had a teaching session outside on June 10th. Defund EPD had an interactive Zoom presentation in coordination with CMP, the People's Lobby and Reclaim Evanston on June 25th, to talk about the origins of policing and police accountability. And this past Saturday, July 11th, Evanston Fight for Black Lives had a virtual teaching community conversation to educate people on what defunding is and exchange ideas on what that could look like in Evanston. I personally didn't see the mayor and many members of city council at any of these meetings, but I know people use a different Zoom name, and I could have just not seen anyone. It seems like a lot of people within the city of Evanston across different offices think that defunding abolition of people's interests and investing in people and communities is just a trend among the youth, that when school starts, and certainly whenever COVID-19 has been properly dealt with. And I think people would be wrong to assume that. Another thing I would talk about today during the meeting about policing was that defunding requires reducing the number of police if you want to bring down the budget, which true, but I want people to know that reimagining, a term that's becoming increasingly popular, and I've heard people use, requires to think in ways that aren't traditional and may not have been in practice before. While defunding will eventually lead to necessary personnel cuts, it's not the only aspect of defunding. The meeting today showed a partial breakdown of the police budget, showing most budget items could be sorted into expenditures and services and supplies. One possibility or an example of reimagining could look like breaking down the budget by task force, and reimagining finances that way. Evanston has their neighborhood enforcement team, which is responsible for droves and gangs, as she explained earlier today. And while I'm not oblivious to the fact that Evanston has droves and gangs, excuse me, investing in community through employment, education, health and human services, and transformative justice, censured approaches to crime, and what statistically alleviates the root causes of drug and gang crime, not more policing. So looking at defunding through the lens of task force allocation, that would be an area of people that Evanston, I think, doesn't need as much funding as it gets if the budget was widely publicized. To take Inglewood, Pullman, or one of the other Chicago neighborhoods that some city employees of Evanston community, excuse me, some city employees believe Evanston community members calling for defunding to take a trip to in order to appreciate our police force more, those neighborhoods, I'm assuming, were named because of their higher crime rate and lower income statistics relative to Evanston. They also have some of the highest police presences in the country. They have more task forces, spending money on them than other areas of the city, and yet those residents also have the most issues with police. Areas of the city that are underfunded like that, excuse me, have some of the best community alternatives to policing, because along with being some of the most vulnerable people in the population, that also makes them more likely victims of crimes at the hands of police. We should not have to wait until our communities look like this before we start taking away money from departments, like many police departments have across the nation, are investing them into our communities. The professor on the call said that not only does defunding come down to personnel, what we want the police to actually do. This is right after he mentioned restorative justice programs and increasingly popular ex, excuse me, popular and accessible options to invest in, independent of the police department. People tend to think of concepts very rigidly, but the concept of defunding is not solely about taking money away from police and does not exist in a vacuum. It's also about having people have a voice that yields decision-making power and who is working for them. It's about spending more money on effective training and personnel development, professional development and hiring practices, and negotiating contracts with the FOP that allow officers to actually be held accountable for their actions and their implicit biases. It's about not spending money to continue to pay officers who have already brutalized people, not spending money on those same officers by promoting them, and then paying their pensions after they retire, and having to cough up taxpayer dollars and settlements due to these officers' behavior. So that's what I wanted to talk about, and I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, and thanks for listening and everything you're doing to advance this conversation. Next up, we've got Mike Basilko, and then Leana Rene Wallace, and then Ray. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I wanted to congratulate Alderman Ru Simmons again on the article about reparations in the Chicago Magazine. It was pretty extensive. Secondly, I'd like to know, I wrote several times to Alderman Sufferedin and to the council about taking item SP2, the Civic Center discussion, off the agenda. There was no documentation submitted with a packet, and yet I understood from a draft minutes from the library meeting that took place in June that Laura Biggs was planning to present a plan for approval tonight, potentially. So there's no backup? There's nothing for the citizens to study in advance, or there's nothing for the council to study in advance, and yet this appeared on the agenda. So I'd like that Alderman Sufferedin to remove that item SP2. During the AP&amp;W discussion, whether it was intended or not, Laura Biggs also said something about a pending change order for Robert Crown. It sounded like it'll push the Robert Crown over budget and in excess of the contingency that was built into the budget. So you had a contingency for change orders, but it sounds like you're going to run over, and she did not say how much that was going to be. I'd like to know that. It got tied into the other discussion, item A18. But change orders, especially on any project, but especially on that project where it's, you know, two or three times what was originally forecast to cost, a change order has to be approved by the city council, and the work should not be taking place if there's a change order pending. The work should not go forward until you approve whatever that number is. So I'd like to know what that number is. Also during AP&amp;W, and I just don't understand how these things happen, you know, whether we're a virtual meeting or not, but there was a discussion and a vote on item A18, and item A18 did not pass for moving the discussion forward to the council. Yet, the interim city manager jumps in, says she wants to do a do-over, wants Alderman Rainey gets back to the, you know, online with the rest of the council members. Then the city attorney said, no, can't do that until Alderman Rainey pops up finally. Magically, all of a sudden, new vote takes place. So, I mean, what are the rules, and do the rules matter, or is it just whatever Alderman Rainey says? You know, we're gonna take a new vote because she decides to pop back into the online. It's just frustrating to watch votes take place and then votes be redone, because somebody says they should be redone, in this case, Alderman Rainey. Lastly, the city manager's search, I'd suggested several times to Gov HR and others that there is a, that there be a citizens' online process to rank candidates before a shortlist is presented to the council. This would be a very easy thing to do. I'd like to have that aired out at some point here or with HR Gov to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Next up, we've got Leana Rene Wallace, then Ray Friedman, and Doreen Price. Welcome, Leana.
Hello, everyone. My name's Leana. I'm an ATH grad, class of 2019, and I'm a Brighton sophomore at Georgetown University. Thank you all for your time tonight. So, here are Mayor Hagerty and Alderman. On June 17th of this year, Evanston Fight for Black Lives sent an email to all City of Evanston Aldermen and the mayor demanding that an official statement committing to defund the Evanston Police Department be released to the public by no later than July 15th, and this demand be reflected in the fall of 2020 when the fiscal year 2021 Evanston budget is discussed and finalized. After speaking with the mayor on June 19th, Mayor Hagerty outrightly stated that he would not, he would not commit to defunding the police. Hagerty emphasized his comfort with the word "defunding," and said Hagerty used the words "reimagine" and "examine" often in addressing the personal changes he was willing to make. This goes to show that our mayor does not understand the urgency and importance of taking funding away from the police and investing in our community. Mayor Hagerty ultimately did not and will not commit to defunding or signing an official statement, but only promised to reexamine the police budget, which is already a responsibility of his job. Since the initial meeting, we have consistently pushed the mayor to engage with community members in an authentic manner, instead of holding forums, true Q&amp;A sessions, and community conversations. The mayor has deflected issues of policing through a highly performative series of talks that limit community voices to those he deems fit to speak. I really appreciate what Nick Davis mentioned. I really think it's important that we bring in community voices that are not centered and that it start from the bottom up rather than, rather than from the top down in those conversations. On June 23rd of this year, Mayor Hagerty released a statement outlining the ways in which the City of Evanston is directly standing against racism. Although Evanston has various equity-based initiatives, how are these initiatives actually playing out? So in regards to the Equity Commission, why does it still have two unfilled vacancies? Did anyone ever replace FEM? What is the operationalized equity project they are supposed to be working on? And why is there no report about it in the most recent packet? And why were the March and May meetings canceled? In regards to the racial equity resolution, it states that Evanston will join the government alliance of race and equity. Did they do so? What meetings or programs have city staff attended? Are they working with GEAR on a racial equity audit of city policies and racial equity toolkit? In regards to the Alternative to Arrest Committee, is it even still meeting? According to the website, the members' terms are all expired, and the most recent packet listed is from December 2019. There was an agenda listed from March 2020, but no packet. In regards to the Employment Advisory Council, there has been nothing posted on the website since June of 2018. No meeting minutes, no agenda, no plans. What, if anything, is this group doing? In regards to Citizens Police Advisory Committee, no meeting since December 2019, no packet or minute since March 2019. Again, what is this committee doing? In regards to Citizens Police Complaint Assessment Committee, no minutes or packet since November 2018, no meeting since September 2018. How is, how is this different from the Citizens Police Advisory Committee? Members' terms are not given. When are new members due to be appointed? In regards to who is reviewing the police operations, are they bringing in an outside consultant? It sounds like this is being done by the city council. Who is in charge? How do we know they have the expertise to do this? This just goes to show, although the City of Evanston professes that they do in fact value equity, in reality, these values are just empty promises that consistently reveal the contrary on the most moral document that exists within a community, the budget. We're asking that you take the first step as leaders, just as the City of Council Minneapolis and the mayor of Los Angeles have done, in beginning the process of dismantling the police by placing our beloved City of Evanston money in the same place where many of you have professed that black lives matter. We need these values represented in our city manager and District 65 and D202 schools where SROs are still present. In reaching out to all nine Aldermen, we've only been able to have meetings with some of the Aldermen, and those that we have spoken to, only Alderman Fleming and Simmons have committed to publicly supporting, defunding the police, and voting on a budget that reflects that commitment. Today, July 13th, sit-ins are being orchestrated at the remaining seven Aldermen's houses, as well as the mayors. These sit-ins are aimed at garnering the attention of our Alderman and mayor as it relates to the current state of policing in Evanston. 56 million of the City of Evanston budget goes to the police. In comparison, Gibbs Morrison Center and the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center is located in the Fifth Ward, where 41.5% of the population identifies as black, according to 2010 U.S. Census data, receive under $2 million collectively. For more information on the city's budget skewed distribution of resources, please go to tinyurl.com/defundepd. For some thoughts on the purpose of the police budget and where cuts can be made, go to tinyurl.com/epdcuts. Look at our Facebook page at Evanston Fight for Black Lives. We demand more, we demand better, and we are not going away. We ask that you please address these issues of systemic racism within the City of Evanston and do so as if your life and family and children depend on it. Black families' lives in Evanston surely do. Evanstonians are increasingly aware of how large dollars are being disproportionately spent in our city, where 35% of Evanston's 2020 general funds goes to policing, while only 3.5% goes to community development. We ask that you, mayor and Aldermen, release a public statement committing to defund the police and stand by that commitment during the fall vote on the official fiscal 2021 budget. We will be reaching out to the Aldermen that we have yet to speak to in the coming days if there are any questions on our ask of you as elected officials in the city that we call home. I appreciate all of your time, and again, as Nick stated, the Evanston Fight for Black Lives holds a lot of events about defunding and what that means, so if there's any confusion, we would really appreciate if you all attended those meetings, if you really do value voices from the bottom up. So I really appreciate your time and the energy that you put into what you're doing, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Leana. Next up, we've got Ray Friedman, then Doreen Price, then Brett Hellenbrandt.
Hello.
Hello, Ray. Welcome.
Sorry, I hit mute. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. You got the floor, Ray.
Thank you. Long time no see. So I wanted to say good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Alderman, Acting City Manager, and City Clerk. I hope you're all doing well and in good health and good spirits. I know it's been a difficult past few months, and I hope soon we'll be able to have our usual face-to-face meeting at City Hall. We know that you came up with five goals for 2019/2020 for City Evanston. All five important, but I chose the number one goal, which was to stabilize our finances. We're very concerned about this and would like to know what you're doing to accomplish this goal. I believe the City Hall is closed, and you talked about furlough days and not replacing empty positions. empty positions. On tonight's agenda, the payroll seems about the same at 2.7 million for two weeks, but looks like the bills are about double for two weeks at 5.7 million. Why is this? We just approved 15 million from Byline Bank and A 22 wants to borrow 11 million. Last month, we paid 3 million in interest to Zion Bank. I don't know what this was for. Was it for bonds or loans or not sure? A 17 wants to increase the general obligation debt by 3 million. A 18, I don't understand increasing 2019 budget from 320 million to 334 million. Where did the extra 14 million come from? A 19 wants to take out another 34 million in bonds. We see only 18 million is for projects and 16 million is to pay off existing bonds. This is more and more and more debt. The last item I'd like to speak about for now is Fifth Ward meeting last Wednesday. I'd like to thank Alderman Simmons for making such an impassioned speech about finding a new city manager and the fact that all residents should be involved in that process and echoed by several council members at different times and different meetings. I'm sorry to be so repetitious, but we really need to have the dialogue as explained in every public comment description. No major decision should be made without the necessary dialogue from any and all interested Evanstonians. Not a questionnaire, not a survey, but a live, in-person meeting. And thank you, Erica Storey, for bringing that up because I, I wrote down whether it's inside a building, outside a building, a park, ecology center, beach, whatever you prefer. We need to have an in-person meeting to see face-to-face, eye-to-eye, to be able to meet with a prospective new city manager or just have a discussion on any of these issues. In my case here, about the budget. Every year, there seems to be a budget crisis. What are we doing to fix it? We already have a pandemic with COVID-19. It looks like we have an epidemic with our spending. Please make this a number one priority to fix it, as you agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we've got Doreen Price and then Brett Hallenbrink.
Hi, can you hear me? It's Doreen.
We can hear you, Doreen, welcome.
Okay, well, yeah, same here. Nice to be present here with this group. Nick and Leanna were on mine from over the weekend, getting to know more about the organization and what they're trying to accomplish. And I'm reading in the Evanston Roundtable about Leanna. She's the topic, one of the subjects, Leanna, of what I'm talking about because how impressed I was in terms of what you're articulating and still do. So everything you said today, I definitely support both of you. And want to just say in my own words how I'm looking at the situation with regard to grassroots effort. So I said, with regard to the extending the declared state of emergency, I now understand that it's two weeks from now instead of two months, but the arguments still apply. During this emergency, Evanston Structured Central Command relies on input from the community leaders outside the auspices of the Public Meetings Act. Resident participation in recent Governor HR was strong and productive, really so, really, really so, suggesting a need to return to grassroots participation in open meetings. If emergency powers are to be continued, two weeks, two months, whatever, with limited number of city council meetings, then scheduling a five to six resident-centered virtual town hall meetings to course our direction through a path, through and past socioeconomic casualties of this pandemic would be advised. Below is an example of a difficult, of difficult conversations that build community across wards, across wards to common goals beyond politics. The 7/7/20 City Manager Gov HR recruitment meeting reported in the Evanston Roundtable on 7/8 is what I'm referring to. How refreshing and enlightening to experience balanced and honest viewpoints moderated by Gov HR, for example, Linda Wallace and Carolyn Loughlin recognizing who has the council's or mayor's ear needs to be on board for the changes they and Evanston need. More Zoom Town Halls, including present and future of Evanston for recovery, health and well-being of the vibrant community upon which it was founded. Budget Town Halls, where Evanston leads the nation to increase health and human services funding and programs necessary to preserve the diversity. Leanna, I was thinking of you, preserve the diversity Evanston residents hold dear. Or a city town hall to identify socioeconomic burdens of culture and structure that fuel crises in order to create together durable remedies built upon restorative justice. And I think of Nick and Leanna on this one and the rest of their group. So the article's called "Some Want Racial Equity and Police Defunding Weight in City, in the City Manager Hiring Decision." And in there, there are quotes from Linda and Carolyn Loughlin. And Carolyn Loughlin and Linda both agreed about things that needed to be done, but in terms of how we get the word out and how we get it done is to get everybody on board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Doreen. Last, last up, we've got Brett Hallenbrink. Welcome, Brett.
Hi, thank you. I will make this very brief. I just wanted to quickly speak in support of amending the Evanston American Legion's liquor license and just clarify a couple of things very quickly. The only thing that this does is change the liquor license to allow us to serve the general public instead of requiring a membership in order to serve the general public. Does not change where we can serve, what hours we can serve. There's nothing else that's changed with this amendment other than our ability to not require people to spend extra money to enjoy the music or events of the American Legion. Again, very, that was very in brief. I don't need to take any more of the council's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brett. Okay. Luke Stowe, are there any more folks that had signed up? I don't want to give anybody off.
That should be the end, mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody that spoke of public comment and a variety of issues in the council appreciates and values this feedback at each council meeting. We're now going to move to the agenda this evening. And the first thing that we have is special orders of business. Alderman Rainey, would you mind, as the senior Alderman, moving SP 1? Right, you're muted, Dan, if you're talking.
Okay.
Yes.
SP 1. There it is. Approval of Evanston Care Act Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2019 Action Plan for the Second Allocation of ESG CV Funding. The Second Substantial Amendment to the Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan to include the second allocation of this funding in the amount of $419,890 for a total of $966,314 in ESG CV funding from the CARES Act to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. Funding source for the city's second allocation of this funding is from the CARES Act in the amount of $419,000, which combined with the first allocation in the amount of $546,424 in totals $966,314. This is for action and I move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion on this item? Alderman Fleming?
I just have a quick question. Is there any staff? I mean, obviously Alderman Rainey just read it, but, but for those who are keeping track, are there, are there any staff updates or any new spending that they wish to keep?
All right. So we have, we have Sarah, we have Sarah Flatts with us. She is our housing manager here in the city. So Sarah, I'll turn it over to you. Do you want to give any additional detail on this?
Um, what we are working right now is with our various homeless providers to try to figure out the multiple demands that are going to be put on our ESG funding and our CDBG CV funding. We'll be bringing a budget showing some of those allocations. Not all of them are going to, at the next council meeting. Not all of them are necessarily going to be absolutely finalized because we are still working with staff to figure out what our needs are going to be for the 25% that FEMA doesn't cover and other things of that sort. But we've allocated 700, excuse me, 370,000 of the ESG so far to our first use, which is rehousing those 21 families that are in the hotels. Will be coming with a request for additional rapid rehousing money to house some of the single adults in that, that are currently in hotels, as well as to start homeless prevention funding for people using ESG. We also will likely be recommending some money for case management for those services that are being provided. ESG CV needs to be spent within two years, so we have a pretty quick timeframe for that. CDBG CV, we have up to six years. I don't think we're going to take anywhere near that to expend that, but we are expecting to bring a proposal for small business assistance at the next council meeting on that. We are still working to try to determine if we can get any ability to extend the term of rent assistance that could be provided with CDBG CV for more than three months, which is going to make it not as, give us not as much ability to help people as we might want. But we're working with HUD and our field rep. We still do not have the final regulations for either ESG CV or CDBG CV, but we may apply for a waiver for CDBG to simply request that we be given the, a waiver by HUD to use, to provide more than three months of assistance to people using CDBG CV if we don't get the regulations soon. Because the challenge is if people are going to be coming out of the, you know, the eviction moratorium will burn off and then we need to be able to help people. And one of the challenges is if they've already been without funding to pay their rent for, say, mid-March, three months won't solve their problem. And so they're going to be people we may be able to help with three months of help, but they may not be the people who are most in need of help. So we're really trying to figure out how we can address that situation and the regulations make it a little bit challenging right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, Deputy City Clerk Gomez, could you please take the roll on SP 1?
Uh, yes, it's Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fiss.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Braithwaite, I think you're muted.
Go on, yeah.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye. Say aye. Everybody hear me say aye?
We recorded.
Yes.
That's been recorded.
Thank you. Yeah, and Alderman Soffordin.
Aye.
All right, great. So SP 1, Approval of Evanston CARES Act Amendment to the Program Year 2019 Action Plan for the Second Allocation of ESG-CV Funding passes the Evanston City Council on a 9 to 0 vote. Alderman Fiss, could you move SP 2?
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Can someone else do it?
No, no worries. How about Alderman?
I will put it in the Fifth Ward.
Thank you.
SP 2, Civic Center Update, Staff Seeks Discussion and Direction from City Council Regarding Potential Relocation of Civic Center Staff. This is for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So this item's open for discussion. I'm going to turn it over to interim city manager Storey to begin this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to have a presentation on the research that's been done to investigate the possibility of relocating select service, civic center staff to the library. Laura Biggs will be giving that presentation and Laura, you can take it away when you're ready.
Thank you. I am sharing my screen. Okay, so does everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Great, yes. So tonight, I would like to just talk to you about some of the information that we've discovered so that we can determine the best pathway forward as we look at protecting our staff and the public during this interesting time period. One of the first things that we did was an internal investigation where we really went through a lot of the information about what is actually happening in the civic center in terms of city's operations. We currently have six departments, approximately 160 full-time employees. Thirty of those are working in person, at least part-time or full-time during this time period in order to provide the necessary city services. Some of our challenges that we're experiencing though is we consider opening up the building to some necessary public, more public processes is how to keep the staff and the public in a clear separation and really also just looking at the safety of buildings. Simultaneously, because of our previous discussions, we have been looking at the library. We've been entering into discussions with the city staff or with the library staff in order to determine exactly what is feasible at the public library. This diagram shows currently the space that is highlighted in blue is the space that basically they feel that is easily transformed to city uses with minimal impact to library services at this time. They've, we've also talked about potentially using this conference room that's adjacent to the teen law space. And I should have indicated this is on the third floor. So as we look at it, it's the southeast corner of the third floor. That area is, a few book stacks is largely vacant, but does have some plexiglass conference rooms that they have built and those would probably be relocated. And also has a room along the very south side that serves as a quiet study area for the library currently. As we really got more involved into our investigation, what we realized is that the third, that area of the library, which is most easily converted for both the purposes of library and the city staff, does not by itself really have adequate space for relocating all of our city civic center operations. There are a lot of issues with relocation and we have referred to some of these before. Document storage is a huge issue. We have a lot of paper in the civic center currently and as much as some of it could probably be really minimized or removed, other things such as ranging from personnel files to easement agreements, documents about historic properties that are used by the Historic Preservation Committee, these have not yet been digitized and really constitute quite a lot of storage and we need those for our daily operations. In addition, no matter what we do, there's always going to be some build-out required. And the more workstations or spaces that you're trying to recreate, the more complicated it gets and ties up additional funding, additional staff time. And then, but is necessary in order to really deal with the safety issues associated for both public and staff in our buildings. So we looked at this really through a lens of like, what will we do for an unknown time period of three to 36 months? And part of the reason why this is unknown is uh, really just because the conditions of the pandemic are constantly changing. Uh, since we've last spoken, we've received a lot more information and additional guidelines from the state about what they expect in terms of our building operations. Uh, the, we've moved from phase three to phase four. We have uh, generally seen a lot of reopening of some types of facilities. Communities around us are doing certain things while other communities are not doing anything to reopen or doing it on such a limited basis. So it's all just very complicated along with the realization that we may actually be moving backwards at some point, just depending on circumstances, which may be completely outside of our control. So what we did was, we assumed that for the time being, which is likely regardless of where our staff are located, but just due to pandemic conditions, that we would still be dealing with a lot of remote work and staggering staff schedules to minimize the number of people in the office. And we didn't worry about including council chambers or public meeting rooms. I'll talk about that a little bit later, but for now, such things are virtual and there are options should we need to consider those as in-person. We didn't worry about document storage because that is a, a large problem. And we did assume that um, we do have other facilities that have limited capacity for relocating some additional staff. So there's really kind of two options. When we say relocate all staff, we're really only looking at a very limited work area still of 15,000 square feet compared to our current city uh, civic center of over 120,000 square feet. And then we also looked at a more phased relocation where we can implement kind of a phase one and then wait and see what happens and what our city needs are. And in this phase one relocation, which we estimate to be about 5800 square feet, we would really be looking at just the public-facing functions only. And we would have our remaining staff that are not in the public-facing functions to continue to work basically as they are right now, which is occasionally we do need to enter into the civic center, but most people are working remotely the majority of the time. So when we talk about these different relocations and no relocations, I just want to really make sure that um, everybody's kind of thinking the same thing. Uh, to do a complete relocation really requires a lot of staff resources. I mean, everything from how are we going to access documents? There's a lot of engineering, IT needs tied up into it. Our facilities staff ends up doing a lot of work in-house every time we try to uh, make changes to our workspaces. A phased relocation, there is still a moderate amount of work, but it is uh, much reduced and we're more able to just focus on what we need to get up and running for a very small number of people. And if we do no relocation, we actually still have a problem with the civic center, which is that we have a hard time um, controlling where public is. And we are going to have a need to provide some services in-person as we continue in phase four. This includes things like general assistance interviews and the collector's office. Uh, we are about to enter wheel tax season, which is a, a whole production in itself. So we would need to make modifications to the building in order to contain people. Because of past security issues, we've actually already looked at a number of ways that we could quick, quote, quickly modify the building. And everything we've looked at, such as um, removing public access just from the third floor, which is community development and engineering public works, uh, it requires a lot. It's typically about a hundred to $125,000 per floor involving putting in new storefront glass, door systems, uh, being able to provide some sort of security. We're really complicated by the fact that the existing civic center building has um, is complying with building codes only by um, some things that make it impossible to isolate certain floors, such as we have really limited restroom capacity. So we comply with the restroom building codes by making it possible um, for people to use the restrooms on the floor above them and the floor below them. But if you start blocking off sections of the floors, then those restrooms are no longer available to the public and the calculations get really complex. So um, and in terms, so as I move through this table, when I look at the different phases, we're always assuming that indefinitely we will be doing remote work and staggered schedules unrelated to anything but the pandemic. We will be um, in order to separate the public and staff, a complete relocation just because we'd be moving to a number of different buildings does require some moderate building changes. Just doing the customer service counter in a library is really pretty minimal, but staying at the civic center is, actually requires us to make some serious changes to the building, which is what we have actually been trying to avoid doing um, and looking for other solutions. However, there is an advantage to relocating our customer service functions or even all of our city staff, which is that we can provide a one-stop customer service desk. And this is something that we have looked at long-term as a huge customer service improvement, but it's really challenging because of the way the first floor of the civic center is laid out. Uh, we're carved up into spaces and it would really require a holistic remodel of a section of the first floor in order to get to that one-stop shop for all customer service. Cleaning efforts, the smaller the space you're utilizing, the easier it is to go through the incredible sanitation procedures that are in the state guidelines working in a pandemic. One issue with the civic center is that while it is an advantage because it's large and the staff can spread out, once we have more people in the building, that also somewhat becomes a liability in that it requires an intensive amount of common areas to be cleaned on a two-hour cycle. And then either a complete relocation or no relocation requires us to make some actual pretty permanent commitments to what we want to do. Doing a small step allows us more flexibility and is by far less expensive. The $75,000 that's indicated to do that largely is to do electrical and data improvements at the library, adding in some switches and um, wiring improvements that actually um, would long-term most likely be used by the library if the city, if and when the city vacates that space. So it wouldn't be wasted. It's something that could be reutilized. The public-facing operations that we're talking about for relocation include the permit desk, administrative adjudication, which is temporarily relocated to Gibbs Morrison, property tax assessment review, also called border review is um, temporarily, we would relocate that to a rec center because we need to start it quite soon. But in the long-term, we could move back to the library to make it a one-stop area. Collector's office and um, the permit desk, actually, I should say, we're doing a temporary relocation to Crown. This is being delivered, uh, being determined by the need to do this very quickly. With wheel taxis and starting and with the current permit desk online operation being pretty overwhelmed, we really need to uh, have in-person options for these things quickly. The installation and moving these to Crown is involving just very minimal counter improvements that can be quickly reversed um, and set up or taken down as needed so that we can um, avoid co-opting the Crown space forever. And then general assistance, oops, the ombudsman and um, parks and rec functions, again, that customer service desk. In terms of the city council and public meeting areas, I know this is being considered at the rules committee. Uh, there is an opportunity that they may have to stay virtual for the next several months or we may be able to start offering them in-person. If we wish to go to in-person, we actually have a number of options that long-term could work. For one thing, we could just utilize the civic center in the evenings only when the staff isn't there and we could restrict people very specifically to certain areas of the building. It's a little complicated, but um, it certainly could be done, at least on a temporary basis. We could also utilize a gym or large room in one of our recreation centers such as the Levy Center. We could ask to partner with some of the Oregon, other organizations in town to use their board space or their auditorium spaces. So we felt like there were a lot of options. We didn't explore this yet just because for the moment we're virtual and we think we have a lot of flexibility to get one of these options set up pretty quickly as the need arises. And so generally, after really doing an investigation, we would just recommend for the moment getting the public-facing operations, putting them in the library based on our conversations with the library staff and the library board. They are open to this, although we need to finalize the detail. This really does provide the lowest cost operation that provides for that separation of staff and public. It allows us to do the one-stop customer service desk, which has been a long-term issue that we've been looking at. And it requires the minimal amount of staff resources for implementation and then for the long-term cleaning and other things that you need to do. It will also give us the flexibility. I do want to say that it is important for us to provide this separation. I know that we have had some security issues in the civic center. I think that most of us at one point or another have ended up with random people in our offices, whether it's something as, as simple as, hey, I'm looking for whatever room that they are not able to find to um, people that are upset. Uh, we've had people show up in engineering who are angry that they received a parking ticket and show up in somebody's office yelling at them about the signage that was designed. Um, to, so it's really one thing and not great when that's occurring when um, there's not a pandemic. But in a pandemic world, to, once we get people on the first floor to the current collector's office and um, parks and recreation space, we feel like it's going to be very difficult to keep them on the first floor. And then you'll be, you will have people say, oh, this office is closed or I didn't get the answer I wanted. I know, I used to just pop up to section such a floor and talk to X person. We feel like that's a thing that is going to continue once the public is back in the building. So to keep the public safer and in a more sanitary environment, to provide just really minimal staff at the civic center and use it as a resource, but only as necessary and keep the staff largely out of the civic center as well, I think provides us the best opportunity to manage these kinds of interactions during this extraordinary time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Hey Laura, this is uh, Steve. You mentioned, uh, you had that slide that showed three different options and the estimated expense, um, which was interesting. You know, because of that building, to stay in that building, to retrofit it, you know, was quite expensive. Uh, you had on that one line item. Um, could you also just talk to, to us? Uh, you know, the one I was talking about, yeah, that, that one, right, with the no relocation. So we stay there, we go back, but we have to retrofit because of the pandemic and everything. Can you also talk, and I don't know if it's factored in there or not, but um, Erica Storley forwarded an email just now to the council about the HVAC system. Um, can you just talk a little about that so we understand how that plays into the no relocation?
Sure. Um, it's really interesting. In some ways, on the surface, the, the building, the existing civic center building um, is actually better than other buildings in that it is really oversized for our needs. People are siloed and they're really spread out. And it's, as we learn more about what, how it appears the virus is spreading, what kinds of situations are not great to have versus what kind of situations are a little bit better, um, that's really an advantage. However, um, we know that we've had a long-term problems with our HVAC and we need to make some substantial improvements. Again, seeing the evolving research, it turns out that most buildings, old buildings, new buildings are not, um, their HVAC is not geared towards dealing with the virus of the COVID nature. Um, it is really challenging. You'd need lots of air changes, which is not typically how buildings are designed today and they were definitely not designed that way 100 years ago. We actually had a consultant, the consultant that did the HVAC study, look at this issue and they provided this letter, which I think is what you're referring to. And what they've indicated is that buildings of the age of the civic center were uh, relied on natural ventilation. So just air to get through in the cracks of the building in order to provide air changes. There is, um, this can be a somewhat effective form of ventilation. It however, is really difficult to quantify. And so we know from being in the civic center and just how other buildings behave as well, that some building spaces in the civic center may receive actually pretty decent ventilation just from all the air infiltration through cracks in the walls, but other spaces are probably pretty poor. There are things that you can do in order to improve your HVAC systems, which now buildings are looking at doing in the light of the new, in light of the new situation. However, those things are not possible easily at our current civic center because we don't really have centralized forced air ventilation. We can't put on things like a UV disinfection system or increase the number of air changes or put in filters into the system or various other things that you could do to improve the HVAC. So for the moment, it, it is currently somewhat of an unknown factor. All buildings are probably going to face some challenge if they don't make these kinds of modifications. But in our particular case, um, we, we wouldn't be able to do any of the fixes anyway until we upgrade the HVAC system.
All right, thank, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna open this up for comments, questions from our city council. Let's see it, I can't uh, see everybody on my screens and I'm scrolling down to see if you just want to raise your hand if you have a comment or question. All right, we'll start with Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. Um, so first I'll just say I'm, I'm looking at another screen because I'm trying to look at the presentation. It is, for me personally, very hard to try to read the screen, you know, take in information and formulate questions. So um, this might be on there somewhere, but because I didn't have a chance to digest it before the meeting, um, it might be redundant. So Laura, you mentioned this little, this space at Robert Crown and, and moving some people there, but I'm more interested in this kind of forward-facing, not storefront, but you know, kind of customer service area. So are you suggesting that that is taking place at the library or are you suggesting that takes place somewhere else?
So at Crown, we've created, using um, two multipurposes that are just off the front door by the lobby, we are creating a very cursory customer service counter that will allow people who have questions about their wheel tax payments to show up and similarly who are having issues getting their permits done, online can show up. Uh, we are working on managing that queue, whether it's through um, through appointments or some other software solution. We're trying to figure out a solution. But it is not a permanent solution, the way it is done. We're basically modifying furniture to create a temporary situation. And uh, I will say that uh, Mr. Hemingway would really love it if we vacate his um, his community center as quickly as possible. Those multipurpose rooms had valuable use to the community other than serving as a collector's office. Putting it at the library, uh, we would actually build out a customer service desk. That's a more permanent thing that people could come and through one desk area, they could have all of their needs met from all of the desk areas that are currently located on the first floor of the civic center. That's a, a philosophy we've, we've looked at for a long time, how would we get it done? But it always required us to spend several hundred thousand dollars in making modifications to the first floor. And during the same time period, we were looking at the HVAC and electrical and saying, let's hold off on making these decisions until we actually decide what we want to do on the bigger projects.
Okay, so my concern there is, is kind of twofold. I, you know, I, I understand moving people to, you know, the library and we have that space, so we don't have necessarily the rental fees and such. However, if I'm thinking of people, you talk about people showing up at your office angry, but I think about people who are coming to pay whatever, tickets, whatever they're coming to pay, now they have to find a parking space, pay the meter downtown. You know, you're not a big thing, but you're adding on some more frustration. I would much rather see, and I realize that, you know, people feel like the Robert Crown obviously was built to serve another purpose, but we're in a different, we're in a different era now. So in my mind, it would make much more sense to try to get as much parks and rec stuff at Robert Crown. They have a huge space now at the civic center and a lot of that office space is either not used or not used by staff every day because they're out in the field. I would much rather see us maybe even look at, you know, losing one of those classrooms we planned on renting out and having the parks and rec staff there because if someone's coming to Robert Crown, it's a little bit more of a welcome in space. They're not paying for parking. They might also, you know, sign up for a class. You know, there's, there's a variety of things that they can do while they're there. You know, there's, there's a variety of things that they can do while they're there at Robert Crown and access our Parks and Rec. So that could almost become our Parks and Rec hub. And particularly because so many people were really concerned about the pricing of Robert Crown, I think for us to make that building a little more than what some people thought was just going to be ice skating or library, whether or not they use it, makes more sense. And that could ideally become a permanent place because we don't know the future of the Civic Center. We don't know how long we might temporarily be in the library, but we do know we've already paid a substantial amount of money for Robert Crown. We're trying to get people in there. They can do a variety of things when they're there and also not pay for parking, which will become, I think, a huge thing if we start sending more people over to the library. So that is, that is my concern for that. Things like, you know, paying the wheel tax and all that. I, I think we had mentioned before, maybe can already be done at the Robert Crown desk, where they were doing more things than usual at the Robert Crown desk. So that's another plus for trying to have as many things there. And then just this slide, you mentioned city council kind of utilizing different spaces for our meetings. I think we have to remember that the school boards also meet in the same time. So I think, you know, the idea that we'd use a school board room for our meeting is not, we cannot do that because they meet on Mondays and they're probably going through the same reconfiguration with their space, maybe trying to not have so many people in there either. So if we wanted to look at using one of our own buildings, I'm, I'm happy for that. Or, you know, however we, we think to do that at the rules committee, but we can't use a school board room because they're meeting at the same times. And if they're not in their space, it's probably because they don't want people in their space.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming.
Can I just jump in real quick, Mr. Mayor, and touch on the parking?
Yes.
If we did do any kind of city operations at the library, we would have some kind of validation program. So either making the lower level of the library parking, you know, free for the, for an hour or whatever, or doing something with some validations at Church Street Garage or, you know, the surface lot right next door. So yes, it's not, you know, as convenient on the parking side of things as the current Civic Center is, but it is more convenient to public transportation. So there's, there's a bonus there. I also wanted to say something about Crown and now I'm forgetting what it was, but I'll circle back if I remember it. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Other comments, questions? Well, interim city manager Storley, I'll ask a, a question then. Some people tonight during public comment were disappointed that there wasn't, you know, materials in the packet about this. And obviously we went through it and some people could see this at home, but it was the first time that they were seeing it. What is the, the protocol when it comes to, you know, the office of city locations? Is this something that the city council has to run? Or is this something that is just in the purview of the city manager's office? Certainly when we sell, well, certainly when we sell or we enter into contracts that are money, then it comes to the city council.
Sure, okay. Just going to answer that question in a broader context of, you know, there was a referral earlier this spring, late spring, summer to investigate whether or not it would make sense to potentially relocate city operations to the library if we were to contemplate moving out of the Civic Center. It has been discussed several times that, you know, we certainly don't have financing available right now, or the funds available right now to do a large-scale implementation of the needed HVAC and electrical improvements that we've been talking about. I believe the estimate in there is somewhere around $10 to, $10 to $15 million is what's been, what's been outlined for those improvements. So it makes sense to discuss what, what direction we're going to take with the Civic Center, whether it be to invest or to move forward with looking at other options. It seemed to be the consensus of the council to investigate other options. So we investigated the library. There is obviously not enough space at present that the library is interested in sharing with us to relocate all city operations there, but there is some space available. And in light of the pandemic and the uncertainty of the future that we're facing, it made sense to investigate that option as something that could be, you know, a customer service improvement over what we have currently because there is that frustration when people come to the Civic Center that they just don't know where they're going or who they need to see because there's so many different doors that are open and ways to get here and there and everywhere. And if you don't know exactly who you're supposed to see or what you're supposed to do, it can be difficult to figure out what you need to do and where you need to go and who you need to see. So leveraging that is certainly something that could be a better customer service experience if we were to move to the library. So, you know, the question being asked this evening is, you know, there are certainly costs associated with this. Do we want to continue to further evaluate these costs and decisions? Or what, what makes most sense for us given the state of things right now? I think it's very easy for some people to, I guess, think about the COVID-19 pandemic in, in a way that they can understand. We, we're hopeful that there's a vaccine. We're hopeful that there's some return to normalcy. These are words that are talked about a lot. But really what we are, we are dealing with is a new normal. And that, that uncertainty we are anticipating is longer than just a few months. You know, it may be a long time before things are back to normal, if they're ever back to normal. And if they are a new normal, we need to make adjustments based on the governor's guidelines for office workers if we are to continue to have our office staff not be remote, which currently Phase 4 guidelines suggest that if people can be remote working, they should continue to be remote working. And so if Phase 4 lasts until there's a vaccine or a treatment, that could be another, another year or possibly longer. And so it makes sense for us to think about the pathways that exist ahead of us and the options that we have based on the situation that we're in and the situation we want to get to, which is, you know, a future home for the Civic Center operations that makes sense, whether it's the existing facility or other facilities.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you. We've got now several people with comments or questions. We'll start with Alderman Rainey, then Winn, then Fisk. You're muted, Anne, if you're talking.
I'm concerned for reasons Erica just mentioned for us to start talking about a permanent relocation to the Civic Center. I think we're making a mistake. I think the way we should do, I think this is just as important as selecting a city manager. I think that we should go to the public. I don't think the public's going to want to move this low, this Civic Center to. We're, we're talking about fragmented locations. I, I think it's a mistake. I think if we need to do a air purifying system, a new air conditioning and heating system, I think it would be worth the cost. Laura mentioned several reasons why the Civic Center is, is a positive thing during the COVID pandemic. It's large and we're, that's what we need. I, I think, I just think we're making such a, where are we, where are we going early voting? Just think about it. Have you ever seen the, I don't know if all of you ever go and stand in line to get your city sticker or your wheel tax? Go, go to get a permit? I mean, what, somebody's going to go to Gibbs Morrison for one thing? The other one's going to go to the library? The other one's going to go to the Levy Center? And then somebody's going to go to, to Robert Crown? Doesn't, doesn't make any sense. People, people hate the idea of having a problem with parking. At the Civic Center, you just pull up and you go, just go there. And people don't, people didn't have trouble finding places in the Civic Center until we got new elevators, where you took all the directions out of the elevators. We put up a sign that nobody can read. It's a bad, it's a beautiful sign, but nobody can read it. And I, I really, I would encourage us, the former subcommittee of Alderman, and let us talk about it. Lately, we're being told what our staff has decided for us. I, I think we ought to have more input. I really do. I'm, I'm, I'm not happy with the idea of pulling up stakes and leaving the Civic Center. I think we have a beautiful opportunity to make the Civic Center our permanent city home. That's what I think. And we should, we should think about that.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Winn, then Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Laura for, Director Biggs, for that, that interesting presentation. And Alderman Rainey, you and I agree on many, many things. On this one, I have to say, I, I don't share your view. Everything involved in reading about aerosolized coronavirus and it's now causing many, many buildings to rethink what their HVAC systems, how they work. And I, so I think that's something that we have to be very, very keenly aware of, that that's going to continue on into the future in terms of not just this coronavirus, but the next coronavirus. And so the cost of doing that in an old building is enormous. I don't like the idea of getting one single customer service desk. I think was one of those people who wanted to, the Civic Center. We've all declined where they're going. And, and I know a one-stop shop would really, really, I think, be liked by most of the public. I think Erica's suggestion, city manager's suggestion that we provide validation, that was, I was thinking that justice as we were discussing it. It's covered parking, so it's easy to get in and get all the stairs. I like the idea of having a very temporary wheel tax customer service desk at Robert Crown. Gets a lot of people into the building, they get to see it. I, I think that this is, you know, as one said, don't let a crisis go to waste. I think in the sense that coronavirus is teaching so many, so many organizations what can be done remotely and what can't be done remotely. I know a lot of organizations and companies are rethinking their officing from everything from public, from governments to private companies. And I think that Mr. Storley is right, that we have to start thinking this is very long-term. I know several people whose companies have told them, we're not going back to work, not coming back to offices until January 2021. And, and I think when we see what's happening in California right now, they've clamped back down again. We have to think very long-term. So I, I support this gradual stepping away from the Civic Center. I think the cost of changing, retrofitting that building is, is so much more expensive than we even realize that. And it, it still is an inefficient building. So in our future, we are going to have to have cleaner air, cleaner surfaces, cleaner buildings. And we need to have a space that's designed to accommodate that in the most efficient way. So I am in favor of continuing this, this discussion about creating a one-stop shop at the library and then gradually looking forward to the future about how we, how we move into a single space someplace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eve, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Winn. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Alderman Winn for those comments. I agree with you. I think the, the gradual move from a customer service desk into the library makes a lot of sense for lots of different reasons. There's an incredible amount of parking there. It just couldn't be more convenient for folks who want to come and use the library and also get some city work done. It adds to the vitality of our streets, which, downtown, which are certainly going to be challenged for the next couple of years. And, and I think too, that it also offers the opportunity for us to do something when we're ready to make a decision on the Civic Center property, to do something exciting over there with a combination of affordable housing and some market rate units. I, I think that would be a spectacular site to retain the historic quality, not only of the site, but also do a nice infill development that actually says a lot of positive things about our community and, and the direction that we're moving into. So I, I think we have to be really realistic about the cost of the Civic Center to us and that it is totally inefficient for us. It wasn't purchased for us, for that to be a permanent Civic Center, but we're sort of a stopgap move, basically to acquire the parkland. And I, I think the time has come for us to be, you know, willing to make a decision. And I'm more than happy to do that. But I am, I, I am also wanting to have the conversation about what happens to the Civic Center site. So I would support Alderman Rainey and the committee. If that's the way we want to go to talk about the Civic Center site. But I think people will be honestly happy to have a place where they can go and go to a desk and get whatever they need done at that single desk for a single stop. The only other question that I've got is, the other department that seems to be really active is in the building permit department, and I'm not sure where that goes. So Mr. Storley, if you can, or Laura, if you can tell us where the building permits would go. But other than that, those are the people that I see moving around in the Civic Center. So that, that department on the second floor, but everything else on the first floor.
Building department, we would move a permit desk to the library as well. So there is, there will be a, an appointment-only permit desk located temporarily at Crown. But again, the Crown thing, we are deliberately doing very temporary and so that it is easily to pull up stakes and move it if we, if we need to, to the library or another location.
Erica, Laura, just to refresh, the library is owned by who? By the, by the library or by the city of Evanston?
By us.
Yes, the library is owned by the city of Evanston.
Right.
So we own the building, the city of Evanston?
We own the building and the library is a tenant. The library is a tenant in that facility.
Right.
Alderman Fisk, you have your hand up.
Thank you. So for the reasons that Alderman Fisk said, I really would like to know more about downtown location for a Civic Center. But to Alderman Rainey's point on process in a committee further discussion, more importantly and most importantly, community discussion. So that facility is in a neighborhood and it's always a courtesy that the neighborhood in proximity to facility that we're discussing has community meetings and there's some sort of engagement process. In addition, there are some environmental assets that are concerned now. I've heard from a few on, if it's Ingram Park or there's some natural habitats or bird sanctuary or something happening in the park there, as well as possibly some heritage trees on Ridge. So some sort of community process, even if it's education. And so those, those environmental assets might be protected in the process of some transaction, but we need to educate the community. And it seems that this conversation is advancing pretty, pretty swiftly without much council input or community engagement. So I would ask that we do move forward with Alderman Rainey's recommendation for a committee to explore this further and, and start with a fifth ward community meeting.
So just so I understand, are we talking about a committee and an exploration of whether the city manager's office should move some functions out of City Hall? Some, all the functions in the pandemic out of City Hall? Or a committee to consider what would be appropriate if the city did move out of City Hall with that property at 2021? I just sort of asked that question. I guess anyone here, I don't know, Alderman Fisk?
I would say both need to be discussed. Right. So, and I don't know if it's one committee or not, but there are two very important discussions that the community needs to weigh in on. So we need education on why the building is so inefficient and what are the safety and security concerns? And what would be the benefits of relocating to a downtown area or using our Parks and Rec facilities more? And as importantly, what would be the proposed next use for the Civic Center? What does it mean to the parkland? What do the neighbors in proximity to that facility, what would they like to see? And what would they invite? So like we do anything else, I mean, if we're planning a park, we have a, a big community engagement on what sort we have a, a big community engagement on what sort of park equipment. Furthermore, I mean, even that much more, we should do something more extensive for our Civic Center.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with that. I think that Ingram Park wouldn't be touched, that that's, we wouldn't, isn't that correct? Laura? Ingram Park, Ingram Park would remain. And my sense is, again, given the historic nature of the Ridge Avenue streetscape, you would retain that entire streetscape and do an infill development. I'm not an architect, so, but I do think that there's an opportunity here for us to do something wonderful and retain the building that we've, I mean, we just put a million-dollar roof on it and, you know, other, other things like that. I, I also agree, I think this is a two-committee job. I think it's a, I think, and Alderman Rainey and Alderman Wayne, can you remind me, I'm thinking that 20 years ago, there was a, a study to see what could be done with the Civic Center? Was that Alderman Bernstein, who, I have a memory of that?
There was a study, there were several studies that were done. There was a program study in terms of what was done in the Civic Center, and that's, that, the result of that was that if the Civic Center was, the conclusion was it was inefficient. There was a study about what could be done with it instead, or what could be done with the parcel. Ingram Park was dedicated as permanent, permanently parkland at that time. Wasn't quite 20 years ago, but that, that was discussed then. Back then, it was, there was also the discussion about the fact that the Civic Center required, had very high maintenance costs because of the building, because of the heating in the building, because of a number of, because of its fundamental design as a school.
Right. Yeah, so I think the two-committee approach is, one is, what if anything we want to do with the Civic Center? And then the other one is, if we decide the Civic Center no longer works well for us, then where should these, where should these services then be located? So that's, and is that a, a council committee? Is that P and D? Who is, who is that that's going to have that, those conversations? A special committee from the mayor?
Let me, let me ask the interim City Manager. When you respond, can you also talk about the timeline of all of this? Because, you know, we have city employees right now working remotely. We have people that, you know, need access to certain city services and all that. How does that affect things?
Certainly too, and I wanted to touch on the concept that, you know, there's, there's, that things have already been decided. This is a conversation, this is a conversation that's been going on for a while. There was the referral by Alderman Braithwaite to investigate whether or not it made sense for anybody to be at the library. We did investigate that, and these are the findings. So we're not, no decisions have been made. This is simply a recommendation that we relocate 30 people to the library to provide services to the public that we can't provide in this building at this moment in time. If we want to provide services to the public in a shorter, in a short timeframe, we have some very limited options. We're not going to be able to do a full-scale renovation of the Civic Center to get it back up and running in short order to open to the public to provide these services. So, you know, we have some, we don't have a lot of options, but we have some. And we can either continue to provide these services remotely, although for building permits and things like that, there would be an advantage to being able to have some face-to-face interaction through a counter, similarly with the collector's office. While we have provided wheel tax service at Levy Center for years, that'll continue to be a service that we provide at the Levy Center. It would also be helpful if we had an additional location from which we could provide wheel tax. So if that location is the library, you know, that probably makes a lot of sense because we can't put in a full-scale HVAC system with the kind of ventilation that would be required before any of us would be comfortable letting the public into the Civic Center building to do anything. And there was discussion earlier about early voting in the Civic Center. I can't in good conscience put early voting in the Civic Center at this point in time when I know what I know about the HVAC system and the setup that we have. It's just simply questionable and it's not safe. So that's not saying that it couldn't be made safe, but if the City Council wants us to investigate how to make the Civic Center safe in the short term to open it back up for public services, we're going to have to investigate those costs, and they will be high. So that's a concern that, that we all share. And I think I forgot your original question.
I was asking about ti, I was just asking about timeline and these different committees being set up and everything else.
Yes, so back to committees. If we wanted to address the issue of, you know, what would a future, should we move out of the Civic Center completely? We could form a committee for that. That could be a committee comprised of Alderman. That could be a committee comprised of residents and Alderman. It would be up to the discretion of the council to create the membership of that committee. Similarly with, if we were to repurpose this existing site to some other thing yet to be imagined, could be an automatic committee, could be a mixture of Alderman and the public, could be just a public committee. We had a, a public committee on this previously. I'm pretty sure I can find the documents and materials that were created by that committee. I think they're still on the website somewhere. Also, certainly, there's already a starting gate for that information and a starting point. But absolutely, the community will be involved every step of the way. This is, you know, the community's building, and if it's going to remain a community's building or some other version of a community building, that's a decision for the community to weigh in on, certainly.
Couple hands up. We're going to go Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Rainey. You just need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues in the comments. And Erica, thank you for your comments as well. I think, for me, this has always been about the recovery period and making sure that we're able to deliver our most vital services to our residents. And I think the conversation of selling and what to do with the land is a little bit premature. We're not there yet. And so I, I hope that we can move forward with our staff's, well, move forward with the referral. And I thank staff for gathering the information so quickly. I mean, here's the thing, we're, we are now in full construction season, even with COVID, and I receive complaints about contractors and residents being able to meet with our staff to get their projects done. And I, I, it's, it's all anecdotal at this point, but if someone's waiting for a project to get signed off on, that's, to me, says lost revenue. I, I think we all can agree that there are certain offices, whether it's the collectors, whether it's the permit office, it's way too small to accommodate people right now. And I don't see how that's going to change in the future. So I think in terms of just our operations, I would hope that we have enough support to move forward with this. And then if we decided a later date to sell, I'm sure it will be a very involved process, similar to the situation that we went through with the library parking lot. So my recommendation is to move forward with this. I think it's important just for functions and more importantly, for the safety of our staff. And then we need to be able to collect our revenue in a very safe environment. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And I guess this is for Laura or Erica. I mean, if, if the council were to say, okay, go ahead and move forward with this gradual, almost reassignment of these city functions to these other locations, that does not mean that at a certain point, these can't all be pulled back to City Hall if that's the will of the council, right?
That, that is absolutely the case. This is intended actually to be a somewhat temporary move. Ultimately, the library is excited about maybe looking at some ways that some services could continue to have an outpost at the library in the long term. But at the moment, I think that they feel like it's a temporary thing. They want their space back eventually. They had planned a large renovation of the library to better meet the community needs. And this space was pretty integral to that in the long term. If we were to do this, we have, since we are opening up the collector's office at Crown for wheel tax season, that is essentially a two-month period of August and September, we would utilize that time to do the improvements at the library, and then we would locate a temporary space at the library. I mean, in-person interaction is always going to be subject to what phase we are in in the Restore Illinois Plan. However, that would allow us to provide really good separation between staff and the public. It would allow a space with the public to be with staff that's really wide open, and people can better socially distance than in our Civic Center. And at any time, it is assumed at some point, it would be reversed and that we would relocate out of the library to whatever the final situation is. It would just be intended that that is post-pandemic.
Thank you, Laura. Alderman Rainey? And then we'll go to Alderman Fleming.
Where, where would we imagine the early voting would be? Because that's going to be happening soon.
So Alderman, as one of my roles in the city, I actually have been working a lot on recovery options for city operations. And I have to say that we are a little bit reactionary and when somebody brings up a problem is when we start discussing it. And so this is, I mean, this is the thing, we have a month or two to figure that out, and we will start working on that. We have options because we have facilities, community centers in various places, and we will look into it and we will present what the good options are for that.
You know what I was thinking? A very large tent in Ingram Park. Crazier things have happened across the United States in the last four months. Best to thought.
All right, let's go Alderman Fleming and Alderman Rabel.
Yeah, I guess to have a couple of thoughts. So the, Alderman Braithwaite spoke about, I guess when I'm looking at this, I'm not, I mean, obviously, this leads to a long-term conversation, or the conversation about long-term usage of the Civic Center, but I am looking at this for a very temporary COVID recovery time. So I definitely agree that any kind of a long-term planning needs to be a whole different process and everything else. And I know a lot of people in the public are thinking that we're using this as kind of the leaping pad to sell the Civic Center, but I think that should be a whole different thing. But my question then is, I'm looking at this chart you have, Laura. So it looks like you have almost everything on your little chart for relocation going to the library except for administrative adjudication. And my question there is, through alternatives to arrest, there are a lot of, not a lot of changes, but enough changes there, particularly when we have youth going into administrative adjudication, that they'd have a private space. And I don't remember all the details, Alderman Braithwaite, but essentially, it can be more of a confidential thing. And so as I'm thinking through Gibbs Morrison and kind of the sliding accordion door, I think we should kind of just rethink that, particularly as we're looking at our youth and having, even an adult, having some more privacy. I don't know if there's maybe a different space that we would think about for that because of the nature of those meetings. I would, you know, if someone's coming in to patronize White House, you know, they don't even need to be seen or hearing who's going to administrative adjudication necessarily. That usually also then has a lot of people waiting in the council chamber, anteroom, to go into that, that court kind of space. And then for the City Manager, so you mentioned, I think, the wheel tax that happens at Levy Center. So my question is, is it possible to, in addition to this library space, I still think that Crown is a better use, but in addition to this library space, equipping all of our community centers, so Fleetwood, you know, Levy, Crown, to, to be able to do those functions as well? So if you're over at Levy Center doing whatever else you might be doing, you can do wheel tax and then maybe, you know, pay a parking ticket or anything else. Like, how does our software work? Are we able to, even for long-term, regardless of what we do with the Civic Center, I think it would be a nice customer service touch that people can access our community centers and do a variety of kind of those really routine business functions with the city. And then lastly, again, back to Alderman Braithwaite, I think this COVID season, I've gotten more cost for permit help than I've ever gotten before, which is great, but we do have some people who are just not tech savvy and who have questions and need to go over documents with our staff around permits. And I do think it would be good to make sure that that permit desk is, you know, as Laura said, accessible wherever we go temporarily, because it seems like they are overflowing with requests. But that, that back and forth over email doesn't seem to be as helpful in each case. And then I've had some seniors who just aren't that savvy on email, who, you know, want to go up and talk to someone about their garage remodel or whatever is happening. So those would be my kind of suggestions based on your thing here. And one other, just kind of offshoot question. So we own the library. Does the library currently pay us rent on the building?
We receive a annual payment from the library that covers everything. So I believe it's $250,000 a year, and it, it covers what's, what's prescribed in the MOU. So that would be the services that are provided by our IT staff, our HR staff, you know, basically the needs that they have that are provided by staff other than the staff that they pay out of their fund and their budget. So that $250,000 a year encompasses all of their uses. So at some point in time, we should probably look closely at that and see if we feel that it is adequate for uses that are prescribed. Because it hasn't been revisited, I don't believe, since, since it was first enacted five or so years ago.
So then I assume in, in that retrofitting this space that Laura's identified, there is no cost to us, aside from whatever we do to the space?
So that's a good point that you bring up. There, the library has this desire to do this renovation. You guys have seen what they've envisioned in the past. And so what's needed to be done for our uses needs to be done anyways for what they want to do for their renovation, which is add additional cabling for network cables and access and Wi-Fi points. And so the majority of the work that would be done would, would simply be reused by them when we were, if we were to.
Laura? Did we lose her?
Yeah, I think she froze up on us.
Laura, well, watch, while we're, while she's unfreezing. What is the cost again for this temporary relocation?
It's approximately $75,000 and probably at least $30,000 is tied up in the electrical and, and data improvements.
And that would be just leaving all those documents you spoke about at the Civic Center, not paying for any kind of document storage, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, I mean, this, we actually could, we're start, talking about starting with basically five counter spaces and 10 workstations. But there is, even in the space that they've allocated to us, there's additional space where we can add additional workstations if we need. We can maybe build out a little bit. It's all like trying to do it as inexpensively as possible. But in terms of your comments about administrative adjudication, we can create a private area for some of those meetings and have administrative adjudication moved there. I think that there are options. The goal is to do something that is, requires a minimal investment at this point. So as we continue to move forward, as I refer to talking to Alderman Rainey, that we basically, in many cases, just solving problems as they come up during this pandemic. We have some flexibility and we haven't overcommitted ourselves all and put all of our eggs in one basket to move some more stuff to the library or to look at good choices about how to handle additional problems.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. Alderman Rabel?
Well, I really appreciate this conversation. I appreciate Laura's presentation. It's been really informative about just what this temporary move would look like. And it seems like a really good idea to me. I encourage you to, you know, flesh out the details for us. And you've gotten a lot of information from my colleagues about different services that we need to be thinking about. And I, I too, like Alderman Fleming and Alderman Braithwaite, have been hearing about a lot of people who have been having trouble getting their building permits. I guess the one piece of information, just to go back to Alderman Simmons' comments about, comments from residents about the habitat and the trees and things at our current Ridge Avenue site. The one area that I'm hearing a lot about is the native garden on the northeast corner of the property, because it's really filled out amazingly with, you know, plants and butterflies and birds and signage for the plants. People who've been working on that garden are really excited about it and are, are hopeful that whatever we do with the property, that that garden site can be seen as a real benefit to, to whatever eventual use we have there. So I just wanted to make sure we, it wasn't, it's not just Ingramham Park, but it's also the Habitat Garden at the corner.
Absolutely. I know exactly what you're talking about, and the volunteers have really done a wonderful job with that space. The purpose of doing this temporary move to the library is actually to avoid trying to commit permanently to what we want to do with the to commit permanently to what we want to do with the Civic Center until there is more of a chance to discuss what we want to do in the Civic Center. And I am, I think we're at, even though the discussion has gone on for over 20 years at this point, I really think we're at the beginning of that discussion. There, there is a public conversation that has to happen that we just haven't had the opportunity with everything going on to really look at. And so I absolutely think that there are a lot of choices about how to move forward. I think if we do want to move forward with looking at something with that property, that's something that happens more in a public space. There are templates from previous studies, but, which even really considered affordable housing, but what our feelings about affordable housing look like have advanced tremendously in the last 10 years. And so even that, I think, if that's a given and that site is chosen to be redeveloped and it is chosen to be redeveloped as affordable housing, even that has to have a second look. But one of the things that were always sort of in common with the previous things, our studies that were done, were the need to maintain dedicated park space. I think one option really looked at moving the building into Ingram Park and then moving the park closer to Ridge Avenue. And I think that was just one option in a study of several options. And most studies did not even really consider that. That's, that park area is a true asset to the community and I don't think anyone that I've spoken to is interested in chopping down heritage trees along Ridge Avenue. So I, you know, it's all a matter of if, if through a process, it's decided to put that building on the market, it's a, or develop it, it's a decision that the community will be involved definitely in what that looks like. And if it isn't, and it was determined to do the necessary improvements to the Civic Center, that can be done. It is expensive and it will be painful because it will be a multi-year construction. So again, that's something that I think becomes a community discussion as to what the community's idea of a public building is have changed also remarkably over the years.
All right, so this was a good, robust, hour-long, at least, conversation about our Civic Center. And so it sounds like the general sense here is from a temporary basis, you know, given the pandemic and the sense that it makes to relocate certain activities or functions to have the staff continue down that road. But the longer term about, you know, where do we want these city functions permanently to come back to the Civic Center or to go someplace else? That, along with if it's to go someplace else, what to do with that property, we want to have a more robust community conversation about that. So I would just ask Laura, if you all, you and Eric and others could talk about that, look at the past and what we've done, and then come back to us at another meeting with a framework for how we begin those conversations, how do you think we best begin those conversations?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, then, let's, so that finishes up SP2. We're going to now move on to the consent agenda. What I'd ask, because you had an APW meeting tonight, if everybody would just take a minute and look at the agenda, both the items in minutes, the APW, and the P and D items, as well as the Economic Development Committee and then appointments. And please let me know if there's anything you'd like to take off for further discussion. So we're talking about items you want to take off the consent.
Could we take off the, sorry, the minutes and A1?
Minutes? In A1, okay, what else are you going to take off? A2, oh, there's all these stuff, but then we'll take A2 off, that's the Crete Amazon. What other item?
We took some items off in the meeting. Do you want me to just give you those or just?
Yeah, why don't, give me those, yes, please.
A12, A18 and 19. Please, A17.
I'm sorry, A17?
A17?
Okay.
I believe, yep. A15 was amended, so I guess I should take that off and read.
Take that off, A15, okay.
And let's see, 26 and 28, I guess those were off, they were suspending the rules in for action and we, so those need to be off and done separately, I think.
So A26 and A27, okay.
Actually, let me clarify, Mayor, do we take, so there were four items that were suspend the rules in for action and we did not need to vote on those in committee, but we need to vote on the, suspending the rules in action?
Yeah, so what we normally do is we keep them on the consent agenda, we do a vote initially to, for those items that are requiring suspension of the rules and then for introduction and action, we do a vote on that and then we just vote on the whole consent agenda.
Okay, so we can keep them on, but we, yeah, we need to do the vote for the...
Okay, so that's A26 and A27 can stay on.
No, 20, it's 26 and 28.
26 and 28, those are going to stay on, okay. Any other items from P and D or anywhere else?
I think, Alderman Fleming, did A16 get amended to match A15?
It did not, no.
It did not, okay. But never mind.
We can't hear you, Alderman Rainey.
Unless anyone has a problem with P4, P5, all of P and D is, remains on the consent agenda.
Can we remove ED2, please?
ED2 is off, okay. Anything else? All right, hearing nothing else, could I have someone move a motion to suspend the rules and allow for introduction in action of those particular items?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I head stepped out. I wanted the...
No, sure.
The American, yeah, the American Legion issue be off the agenda.
All right, do you know which item that was?
Uh, let me see, that was 26, A26.
A26, okay, so A26 is off now, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so seeing nothing else that people want to take off, can someone just move suspension of the rules?
I move suspension of the rules.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, Deputy City Clerk, you take the role on suspending the rules and allowing for inspection and action of those items on the consent agenda that have that.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman?
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferden.
All right. All right, I have a technical question for Kelly Ganderstee, if she's on the line.
Yep, I'm right here, hi.
All right, so that, that was not a unanimous vote. Alderman Fleming voted no to suspend the rules. So can we, can we move forward with that or no?
No, not for ordinances.
All right. So we're going to have to take, take those items off the agenda then.
And I just wanted to make a point.
Which one did she, is there a specific, just a point of clarification? Alderman Fleming, is there a specific item that you want or was it on the whole thing?
We talked about this in our meeting, so I was not supporting of suspending introduction and action for the, the new liquor licenses in one night. I was okay.
Well, then you take that one off.
Right.
Well, I thought we were doing them individually. I didn't know he was lumping them all together. That's why I asked a question earlier.
Now you've taken everything off the consent agenda.
No, I haven't, well. Kelly, were you saying something else?
I was also wondering, A24, A25, A26, I'm seeing on the agenda, I'll request suspension, and so does 27 and 28, I'll request suspension for intro and action.
And the one that's been taken off is A26.
Okay.
Alderman, you're saying you want A28 off as well?
So this is what I discussed earlier and I asked Council about this, I, I did not want to vote for the ones that were giving the new liquor license in one night.
Which?
So those you come up with a consent?
Specifically?
I'm sorry, Peter, what'd you say?
I just wanted you to call them out specifically because the one that I explained isn't a new liquor license, it's just a transfer and I'm not sure which other one you were...
No, it is, it is 26, which is already off, and I guess 26 is the only one.
Oh, 26.
So then I was wrong in my vote, so I'll vote yes for those. 26 is the only one and Alderman, what's your name, took that one already. So I was wrong, so can I change my vote, Kelly?
Yes.
Great, so I'm, can we just call it again now? Sorry, it's like so late, I'm sorry.
All right.
It is.
Or can I just change it, Kelly?
I'm going to accept your change, I'm going to accept your change vote for Alderman Rusiman's. Deputy Clerk took the role, the vote to suspend the rules and allow for introduction in action for those items has been approved by the City Council on a nine to zero vote. City Clerk, can you please take the role on the consent?
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman's?
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferden.
All right. Thank you, City Clerk. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Alderman Fleming, if you could just introduce CM1?
Yes, I move for approval, CM1, approval of minutes of regular city council meeting of June 22nd, 2020 for action.
Second?
Second.
Second.
I ask that the minutes be taken off the consent agenda. The, this particular, I guess, iteration of the minutes is generally okay, however, the June 8th minutes contained an omission that the clerk had mentioned he was going to correct previously and the omission was not corrected specifically. In the clerk's comments, he had referenced a public comment from Kelly Marcel and had indicated that she was opposed, or I don't remember the wording, but the general idea was that she was not in favor of a public process for the city manager selection and that was not what her submitted comment said. So she has been asking that that be corrected. I did speak to Clerk Reed earlier and so he will do that, but we do have to, because the June 8th meetings minutes were already approved, we do have to have a motion to correct those. So I'd like to move that we correct the June 8th meetings to accurately reflect on this Marcel's public comment.
Second? Okay. All right, any conversation? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, you take the role.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Braithwaite? Because we'll come back to him.
You're back, Peter?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman's?
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferden.
All right. All right, thank you, City Clerk. So the motion to correct the June 8th minutes reflecting Kelly Marcel's, that she, reflecting her, her comments, has passed the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote.
And I, so I'd like to move that we approve the June 22nd meeting minutes as well.
Second.
Okay. Any conversation? Seeing none, City Clerk, you take the role, please.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman's?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferden.
All right. All right, CM1, the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on June 22nd passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed from the Administration Public Works Committee. Alderman Fleming, if you could move A1, please?
Yes, and move for approval, A1, which is the City of Evanston payroll bills and credit card activity for action.
Second.
All right. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. With regard to the, to the bills, I like, I would like to move that we amend the bills and remove a portion that is on page 33 under Department 14. There is a section for, I think, four invoices for election consulting in the clerk's office. Clerk Reed's not with us tonight. I have some questions and concerns about that. It looks like these services for elections consulting were provided after the election, so until we get some clarity, I'm not comfortable approving that, those invoices. So I'd like to move that we remove those four invoices from the bills list.
Second.
Any conversation? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, can you take the role, please, on that amendment?
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman's?
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferden.
All right. All right, so the amendment to remove the four invoices for election consulting in the clerk's office has passed the City Council on a nine to zero vote.
So I would like to move that we accept the bill, or how we were to pass the bills as amended, approve the bills as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seeing no conversation, City Clerk, you take the role.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Braithwaite? All right, we'll get back to him. Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman's?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferden.
Aye.
And I didn't catch Alderman Braithwaite spoke, did he say aye?
He gave a, he gave a thumbs up, he was having trouble.
Okay.
Yeah, so he was an aye. So A1, approval of City Evanston payroll bills, credit cards as amended, passes the City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to move to A2. Can you introduce that, Alderman?
A2 is for action, is the approval of BMO Harris credit card activity with amount of, period ended April 26th, amount of $20,590 and 54 cents for action.
Second.
Okay, any conversation? Seeing none, City Clerk, can you take the role, please, on A2?
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rusiman's?
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferden.
I abstain. All right, so A2, approval of the BMO Harris, Amazon credit card activity passes the Evanston City Council on a eight to zero vote with Alderman Sufferden abstaining. Alderman Fleming, can you take us to A12?
Yes, A12 was actually taken off of the agenda because the application was withdrawn by the requester. That was the request for tailgating by Northwestern.
Okay, thank you for that. So that's been removed from, again, all right. A15?
Yes, A15 was amended. Yes, A fifteen was amended in committee. So the new resolution would be, the new resolution up for action is Resolution fifty-eight dash R dash twenty, extending the declared state of emergency to July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. That was done. We had some questions regarding the extent so far and the kind of the rationale for the declaration of state of emergency. So Legal Counsel, I believe, is bringing it back next meeting with more information. We had some questions. So we amended the date.
Okay, so A fifteen has come to the Council with an amended date of July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty instead of September fourteenth. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any conversation? All right, seeing, seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the role on A fifteen as amended?
Alderman Rebel.
Hi.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
Alderman Fleming.
Hi.
Alderman Fisk.
Hi.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Hi.
Alderman Nguyen.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Hi.
And Alderman Soperden.
Hi. All right, so A fifteen, Resolution fifty-eight dash R dash twenty, saying the declared state of emergency to July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. So that was amended, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Could you take us to A seventeen?
Yes, A seventeen is Resolution sixty dash R dash twenty. Limit on tax-supported general obligation debt. This would move our debt limit from one hundred fifty-two million to one hundred fifty-five million. It is for action.
There's a second?
Second.
All right, this is open for discussion.
You know what, Mayor? I think I'm, I'm rereading my notes and I'm sorry, I'm like delirious. We had a discussion, but we did end up passing, so I could have left it on the consent agenda. So my apologies for that.
Oh, okay, no worries. Okay, so seeing, seeing no discussion on this item, City Clerk, can you please take the role on A seventeen?
Alderman Rebel.
Hi.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
Alderman Fleming.
Hi.
Alderman Fisk.
Hi.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Hi.
Alderman Nguyen.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Hi.
And Alderman Soperden.
Hi. All right, so A seventeen, Resolution sixty dash R dash twenty, limit on tax-supported general obligation debt, increasing it from one hundred fifty-two million to one hundred fifty-five million, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Could you take us to A eighteen, Alderman Fleming?
A eighteen is Resolution sixty-one dash R dash twenty, the twenty nineteen budget amendment. This moves our, increases our budget from last year to three hundred thirty-four million, seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars for action.
There's a second?
Second.
All right, this is open for discussion.
We had our discussion at the meeting.
Okay, all right, so seeing, seeing none, City Clerk, can you take the role on A eighteen?
Alderman Rebel. Alderman Rebel.
Said aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Hi.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Hi.
And Alderman Soperden.
No. All right, so A eighteen passes the, A eighteen, Resolution sixty-one dash R dash twenty, the two thousand nineteen budget amendment passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote. Alderman Braithwaite, you were a yay on that, right? I didn't hear. Okay, yes, got it. Okay, on the seven to two vote. Could you take us to A nineteen, Alderman Fleming?
A nineteen is ordinance sixty-nine dash O dash twenty, authorizing twenty-twenty obligation bond issuance for action.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on A nineteen? Okay, seeing none, City Clerk, can you please take the role on A nineteen?
Alderman Rebel.
Hi.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Hi.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Hi.
Alderman Nguyen.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Hi.
And Alderman Soperden.
No. All right, so A nineteen, ordinance sixty-nine dash zero dash twenty, authorizing twenty-twenty general obligation bond issues, passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote. Could you take us to A twenty-six, Alderman Fleming?
Eight twenty-six is ordinance seventy-two dash O dash twenty, amending city code section three dash four dash six S to permit the service of alcohol to American Legion non-members. This is for action. Or is it just for introduction, I guess? They didn't do, suspend the rules for this one?
Well, I think it is for introduction in action. I think that may be taken away in this, but right now it's written up as for introduction in action. Okay, is there a?
Second.
Second, okay. Now this is open for conversation. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'm sorry. So we're not voting to suspend the rules on this? Is that correct?
Well, right now, what, it just got introduced as it's written on the, on the agenda, unless you took that off at APW. And so it's for introduction in action. So we would have to have a vote to suspend the rules unless there's going to be an objection to that.
And, and I'm objecting to that.
Okay.
So I don't know whether we want to have a vote to suspend the rules or what, and I'll vote no.
I don't think it was in our original vote to suspend.
Oh, in the committee?
It was taken, it was taken off. So when we, when you did the vote for suspending the rules, twenty-six was already taken off. Alderman Fisk had taken it off before.
Correct. So it wasn't part of the consent agenda. That's why we're talking about it now.
Right.
But in AP, APW, did you pass it for introduction and action or disintroduction?
So we didn't do a vote for introduction and action in APW. We did not do a vote to suspend the rules, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We did not do that as a separate vote.
Okay, so did you just pass it for introduction then?
We read it as is, but we did not take the separate vote.
Oh, I got you. Okay, Alderman Rainey.
Well, so if it's just for introduction and we still have an opportunity to do otherwise. And I heard several people had an objection to this in concept. And so I'd just be curious to hear Alderman Fisk's issue with this license change.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So my, my objection is not so much an objection. It's sort of unpeeling the onion here. So the, what, what is being requested is the change of a liquor license that was issued under open space zoning. And my understanding is that we don't have any other private liquor licenses that, first of all, open space zoning doesn't even allow for liquor licenses. Secondly, they wouldn't allow for a bar or a restaurant and a bar under open space zoning. And I'm just, I, I called Alderman Rebel and I asked if this was something that had been discussed at the Liquor Control Board. And actually, apparently it hadn't been. And I am, I am uncomfortable with, and I'd certainly be willing to grandfather in the, the existing liquor license that's there. But in trying to go back and figure out how the license was issued in the first place, I think it probably, and maybe some of you have a better memory on this than I do, but it was probably allowed because it was a private member organization for the veterans and their guests. And the guests at that time were probably a family member or a date or a friend or someone who came in with them who wanted to get a drink at, at the bar. And that's very different than opening this up to the general public. And that's pretty much what they're asking to do is to open, open a bar to the general public on open space land. And I'm struggling with that because we've got lots of open space land. We've had interest in the past from folks who would like to come in and operate food service and, and serve alcohol. And we've said no to them in the past. My understanding is that we've always said no to anyone who wanted to sell alcohol in the parks other than for a, a temporary permit, a special event or a one-day event or something like that. That's not what this is. And I, before we, before we expand this license, I just want to make sure that we know exactly what we're doing and the implications that it may have for the rest of the parks and our park system and the lakefront, Harley Clark, the Arrington Lagoon, other parks within the city. I, even though we issue our liquor licenses specifically to one operator, there still is the likelihood that someone would come in and say, well, gee, you granted it to this operator and therefore have established the precedent that at least you're open to that. If you're Northwestern University and you're arguing, for example, that we need to raise money, then why not allow them to have a bar on canal shores? I mean, there's, there's, I don't think that's going to happen, but it is in the realm of possibility that some things could occur that we don't necessarily want to occur. And it may be that our, our issuing of this could make it easier for someone to argue that they should be allowed to do that in the future. I just don't feel comfortable with it. And I, I would feel most comfortable in referring this to the Plan Commission. Maybe we want to add a special use under open space zoning. Maybe we want to add a special use for not-for-profits to operate, to serve liquor for sale in our parkland. That would be something for them to discuss and make a recommendation to Council. But I, I think this is not the way to make this kind of, of policy change that has been in Evanston and part of our history forever. So that's, that's my discomfort with this. I, I wish that this had been brought up at the Liquor Board Meeting. I think, I think it should have been discussed there. And maybe that's just one of the problems that we have with trying to do so much from so many different locations that we're not all together to talk about these things. But I would caution everybody to just kind of slow down and take, take a look at this and see if this is indeed what you want to be doing for the future.
Alderman Rebel.
Just a little more background about the American Legion and what, what is currently happening. So they have a Class S liquor license. They're the only entity in Evanston that has such a license because it's only allowed for veteran associations. And they currently, and they are allowed to serve alcohol to members. And they have three categories of members, veterans, grandchildren of military personnel, and then a third category that they call boosters. And that would be guys who come off the golf course and want a beer and they, they decide, well, we're going to spring for a booster membership in the veteran, veteran, in the American Legion so we can enjoy our beer today. So what they're, the American Legion is asking for is to sort of drop that and, you know, to be more welcoming to neighbors and golfers to be able to enjoy, and particularly over the summer. And the reason too, that I was in favor of suspending the rules was because they do have this lovely little patio area and it's a shame not to be able to be using it during our COVID summer here. So I, I have to say to Alderman Fisk, yeah, I had, I, the idea of the open space zoning is not an issue that was brought up at the Liquor Board Meeting and not something that occurred to me either. But functionally, they already are serving to members of the public who, who are, you know, who join for a very modest booster membership.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? I don't see any more conversation. This is for, it was for introduction in action. Why don't we just move this for introduction? That'll give everybody two weeks to have discussions, think about it more, and then the Council can decide at the next meeting. Agenda for action.
So I move for introduction.
Second.
Second, okay. City Clerk, could you take the role? And this is on, sure, anyone that's watching, this is A twenty-six, item A twenty-six, ordinance seventy-two dash zero twenty, amending city code section three dash four dash six S to permit service of alcohol to American Legion non-members. And this is for introduction only.
Alderman Rebel.
Hi.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
Alderman Fleming.
Hi.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Braithwaite.
Hi.
Alderman Nguyen.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Hi.
And Alderman Soperden.
I didn't catch Tom. I didn't catch you.
Hi.
All right, so A twenty, A twenty-six passes for introduction on a eight to one, eight to one vote. All right, Alderman Fleming, can you just go ahead and move ED two? Oh, no, excuse me. I guess that is Alderman Wilson. Excuse me, you're here. So I'll just have Alderman Wilson do that.
Thank you. ED two is approval of funding for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. The Economic Development Committee and staff are recommending City Council approval of funding for the Chicago North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred five dollars for the period of July first, twenty-twenty through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. This represents a fifty percent decrease from their two thousand and nineteen allocation. Economic Development Partnership Account is number one hundred. And the details of the account I won't read. The City Council approved one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for twenty-twenty. And the city has committed fifty thousand dollars to downtown Evanston for enhanced trash removal and marketing for twenty-twenty. Upon approval of the reduced request and accounting for the fifty thousand dollar F-Mark commitment, fifty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars will remain in the account. I move approval.
Second.
Any conversation? Alderman Soperden?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I know Paul's on his, I see his avatar. Maybe this is a year we could skip this. And normal times, this is probably a wise investment, but is there any reason relative to some of the other uncertainties you have that we should spend this money?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Please confirm you can hear me.
We, I can, welcome, Paul.
Thank you. I wanted to make you aware that Gina Speckman, the Executive Director of the Vice President of the Bureau, is also on the line. Think, you know, I, I would say that it's important, especially during downturns, that we continue to market and, and make sure people outside of our market understand what's happening and ever sooner remind them to come here and stop, and stay at the hotels we are, it's been open. I would argue that it is an important expenditure. I look through a certain lens, however, and that is economic development. So I'm not necessarily the most objective observer, but I do think this is really important. And as I said, Gina is on the line if she wants to give a few words about it.
All right, so thank, thank, thank you, Paul. We do have Gina Speckman. I don't know, Gina, if you want to add anything to what Paul said, and then I know we've got Alderman Wilson wanting to make the comment, of course.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You're welcome.
Yes, obviously, our industry has been hit really hard by COVID. We've worked really diligently to just change what we do in terms of our marketing. I think we've been pretty successful through entire COVID in promoting the restaurants and things that have opened during the various phases. We have a long road to come back to where we were before. We have a long road to come back to where we were before, and we are committed to the successful return to, you know, business for our restaurants and our hotels. We know that things are very compromised now, but there is hope, and we've done a pretty good job in making sure that the Evanston restaurants and all their different phases have been voted well to not only the people within Evanston, but to the communities around it. And during this time period, we have eliminated our membership restrictions, so we represent any restaurant that wants our assistance and support, and we've really been open and I think done a really good job in supporting these businesses that are struggling.
Thank you, Gina, and thank you for all you've been doing to help them. Let me go Alderman Suffertin, because you may have a follow-up, and then I'll go to Wilson.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Paul or Gina, this is a question, either of you can answer. Is there any contractual reason why we couldn't pause this for a year? And then become full members in a year when it makes more sense in light of our budget? Or do we have to be members all the way through?
Well, right now, our rules are that if a community leaves us, they have to, they have three years until they can come back. But, you know, we think that what the restaurants need in terms of supporting their employees and keeping as many people employed as possible and keeping these restaurants open so that they're there when things recover is very important.
Alderman Wilson?
Accentuating one of my constituents' concerns about the fireworks, I heard some in the background. But no, I think that really, actually, this is, this is the time that we are going to need this marketing resource. This is the kind of marketing and networking that we are really not in a financial position to do. So the Bureau is very adept at doing the work. I think they've done a good job in the past, and while I don't want to spend any more money than I need to, than we need to, it seems like this is money well spent. I appreciate the fact that the, that the ask is, has been reduced by 50%. But as we get businesses back online, they are going to need that backup, and they are going to need that marketing resource that, that otherwise wouldn't be available to them. So people are going to need to know, you know, who and when is back in business, and this is, seems to me a good point to it.
Okay, thank you. I've got Alderman Fleming and Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, I also appreciate that the cost has been reduced. However, I've had this question for several years, and maybe this wasn't, I don't see it in here, as I'm always trying to figure out what our outcome, I mean, what the, what the outcome is for the money we're spending. So I know that in years past, you know, you brought forward some numbers and how many referrals you made. You're not always able to, you know, then connect that to actual businesses coming to Evanston, so maybe that's not the way that you calculate things. But while I think our businesses need, you know, some support, I, I have not heard from them to know that this is exactly the support or that they can tell me people are coming in based on the marketing that you're doing. I think that our SSAs and business community here in Evanston seem to do a really good job. Obviously, I'm in town, but again, if I'm looking at $50,000, you know, for your services, which I'm still not exactly sure how that pays off for the business owners, I would much rather spend some, if not all of that money, in very tangible ways as, you know, more economic development grants for such two businesses. Maybe allowing them to market themselves, and maybe that's how they use it to a staff who maybe they use in some other kind of way. I just need to see more of a tangible outcome to the money we're spending, and I don't remember seeing that in years past. And definitely this year, the businesses that I've talked to, which is not all of them, you know, they're, they're looking for more, you know, grant money in support of which we've tried to be creative, but we have limited funds. So I'm much more interested in getting this money into the hands of businesses to figure out maybe the best way they can grow their business in this kind of economy versus this membership model, and then revisiting your agency when we are in a better place financially and have just, you know, kind of back to a regular flow of capital. And then, Paul, my question I have for you regarding the trash with downtown, is that just an extra amenity we're offering this year?
No, that's, you know, I highlighted that in the memo just so you knew what the money was being spent for, and that was approved last budget year. We do a supplemental trash pickup, and that's something that we've worked with public works. I don't know how many days a week we pick up the trash with that additional supplemental funding, but it's significantly more than it would be if we did it ourselves.
Okay.
So the money goes to, yeah, it goes to the, it's primarily for trash and a little bit of market.
Okay, and then I would love for you to tell me a little bit more about if we do any of that in the other business areas, but you can just email me that information.
Okay.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thanks. So Gina, could you talk a little bit about the support for the hotels that comes from the Convention and Tourism Bureau? It's extremely, extremely important. I don't know if you guys have Googled hotels recently, but the Orington is closed until, when, Paul, the end of, end of August. I mean, there, we need, we need to provide reoccurrence to the general public that to come back to Evanston, to stay in Evanston, it's going to be real difficult for them with Northwestern basically not being, doing what they've been doing. And, yeah, we just, I think the support for them is just really critical. Gina, could you just talk a little bit about the hotels?
Yes, as you know, the Orington's closed, but the other ones are not, and I have a staff person that just works for the hotels. They have special offers now. As you know, in Phase Four, they can have up to 50 people. We're working on smaller meetings and groups that are coming to the hotels. It's very different than what we used to do in the past. We're dealing with more local business, and we are literally on a weekly basis updating what the hotels, the specials they're offering for families that are coming to visit relatives. Our marketing has totally changed to adapt to what Phase Four can accommodate, to get any kind of business into the hotels. Most of them are opening. As you know, the Graduate is opening in September. We're already working with them. They're very eager to work with us. They work with convention bureaus in each of the cities that they're in. As you know, they're in college towns, and they're not waiting. They all have sales staff that are working now. Even the Orington has a director of sales that is booking business for the fall, and we're their lifeline. They have reduced their staffs by 80%. They have no sales or marketing dollars right now at this point. We're it for them, so it's very important to them.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All right, seeing done, City Clerk, this has been moved and seconded. Could you take the role, please, on ED 2? It's the approval of funding for the Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau for fiscal year 2020.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Dan, we didn't hear you. Alderman Rainey?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Braithwaite? I don't see him on the call. Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
We didn't hear you, Tom.
No.
And Alderman Braithwaite, we didn't get your response. Okay.
He's an aye.
He's an aye.
Thank you. So ED 2 passes the Evanston City Council on a seven-to-two vote. I would like to thank everyone that has applied in this evening, that was appointed to a board or commission or committee. We had a lot of people. I want to thank Kimberly Richardson, who helped me, but we had a lot of vacancies filled, and I appreciate that passing on the consent agenda tonight. We're now going to turn to call of the wards. We'll start with Alderman Ravel tonight.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Rainey?
No report.
Alderman Fisk?
No, Alderman Fleming.
Excuse me, Alderman Fleming, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. I just, I have a ward meeting on Wednesday, July the 15th. I'm in the city calendar for the Zoom link or whatever we're using. And on July the 21st, Alderman Suffertin and I are having a joint meeting about policing.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, I'm going to try to get this right this time. So I'm going to make a, a reference to the Plan Commission to just one second, I'm sorry. Okay, wait, all right, he's quiet. To rezone the 1900 block of Orington, beginning with 1910 Orington, going north to 1946 Orington, and then west to 714 Foster from R 4A to R 1. This is at the request of neighbors. These are all single-family houses with the exception of 714 Foster, which is a six-flat. We don't want to leave a pocket of R 4A on Foster. And so these, these are folks, again, I have no idea why this wasn't zoned R 1 in the first place, but it wasn't. It connects to R 1 from points north, and then T, the T District's on the east side, and R 5 on the west. So again, at the request of neighbors, I'd like to move this to the Plan Commission. That means that there will be a public hearing at the Plan Commission, then it will come to council for an ultimate decision. So I hope I got your support on that. And I understand we need to have a vote tonight on the council to refer it to if it's to a committee that's not a standing committee.
Second.
I guess this is a point of information for our corporate council. How do we rezone properties when you don't have ownership on it? And I think we've run into this issue in the past.
What do you mean, when we don't have ownership?
Maybe, I don't understand. You just laid out an area of properties that the city of Evanston doesn't have control over, or you don't have ownership. So I just, I didn't understand, and maybe I missed something. When you were talking to various, did I miss something?
This is at the request, this is at the request of the homeowners who would like, from the homeowners. There's two ways of doing that. They could, they could make an application on their own, which would require a petition and an application fee, or they can make that through an automatic referral, and I agree with the automatic referral.
Well, as soon as you said on behalf of the homeowners, then now I understand. Thank you for that clarification.
But City Attorney, I'm confused, does Alderman Fisk need any kind of vote or just a second on that, what she got from the homeowners?
She doesn't even need a second. This is, she'll literally just make the referral in public, and then it goes through.
No, no, that's not right. That's not what we were told. She needs a vote. For non-standing committees, an Alderman needs a vote to refer an item to a non-standing committee.
I literally took this from an ordinance, I'll, I'll pull it right up.
All right, so while Kelly's doing that.
I'm going to vote yes.
We'll come, we'll come, we'll come, we'll come back if, once she helps figure out if we definitely need a vote on that. Alderman Fisk, I'm, excuse me, Alderman Braithwaite?
Wanted to give a shout out to the boys' basketball team, Coach Ellis, and the alumni and volunteers that came out for the street painting in front of this public, public car park in front of the high school. Did an amazing job. One of the things we're working on with the neighbors in the community, as well as the high school, is your permanent naming. So I don't think that's something that I need to make a referral, but I am sharing it because we didn't have a board meeting in the month of July, and then we'll follow up with the Director of Parks and Recs to process that street naming project.
Thanks, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you.
How about Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Nguyen, do you have anything to follow up?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report, all right. Alderman Wilson? You're needed, Don.
All right, I would like to make a referral back to the Planning Development Committee. We talked about this a number of times before, but I think it is hopefully maybe finally time to repeal the three unrelated ordinance in conjunction with some of our housing initiatives. So I would like to refer that to Planning Development.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ru Simmons?
Thank you. Just in response to the concerns and the advocacy for defunding the police, I just wanted to share the note that I shared with the advocates. A couple of weeks, maybe it's been a week ago, we had a one-on-one meeting, and one of the advocates, Sinopia Aiden, said abolish the way we think of policing today. And I thought that was a good statement that she made. My statement to them was, I share your goals to defund the police. This goal is in line with priorities for community development, economic inclusion, health and social equity, access to neighborhood, school, environmental justice, equitable mayoral appointments to boards, boards, committees, and commissions, reducing our recidivism rate, and strengthening families overall. Overpolicing was a primary argument for using cannabis sales tax revenue for reparations to black community at 71% of our cannabis-related arrests. And we're the black community, and we are less than 70% of the population. Black and white cannabis consumers equally partake. Our city has shown some leadership, and I believe we are collectively ready for more radical change. Thank you for not letting up. Your leadership is appreciated. So I just wanted to share that. I know there has been a lot of discussion, concerns from Fifth Ward residents on what does defunding mean, and I would recommend that you, if you have further questions, please do attend our ward meetings or either follow up with the advocates that are hosting meetings on educating the community citywide. And thank you to all of the Fifth Ward residents and friends that attended our Fifth Ward meeting. It was very well attended, and it was productive. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Suffertin?
The joint ward meeting that Alderman Fleming and I are having on Tuesday, the 21st, I'd encourage all of my friends who I met in my house tonight to submit their questions and issues as we discussed, so that we can have a group discussion, setting the table for our council meeting on the 27th.
Great, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ravel? Excuse me. Alderman Suffertin, I started with Ravel, right? That's it, okay. So thank you, everybody, for a call of the wards.
Could I please find out whether we need a vote on that?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Kelly, again, Dersky, can you just give us an update?
I don't think we need a vote. So ordinance 6-3, 6-3-4-3 in part reads amendments proposed by any governmental agency of the city may be made in such manner and pursuant to such procedure as the city council deems appropriate. So if the city council just deems it appropriate to refer it back to committee, that's fine, if the council wants to vote on that, I suppose they could. There's not much guidance under the ordinance, so I don't think we need a vote, but it's not inappropriate. It's just whatever the council decides they want to do.
I, I think what, what was being referred to, I think Nick was referring to the rules of the Plan Commission. Am I, am I correct? Colleagues on P and G, is that what he was saying? Anybody?
You know, let's just vote on it, and that way
Let's just get this meeting.
We're going to talk more time, yeah, so let's, yeah, let's do the vote. I'll, I'll support it.
I vote yes.
Okay, let's move, move the motion so at least people that are watching understand what we're, what we're referring to. So Alderman Fisk, you want to move?
Yes, okay, so, but what the, the motion is, is to rezone the houses on the 1900 block of Orington from 1910 Orington to 1946 Orington, and then 714 Foster from R 4A to R 1 at the request of, of the property owners.
But it's to refer to the Plan, so it goes through the process?
Yes.
We're not doing that tonight, we're not approving it, got it?
No, right, no, I was just trying to, I
Is there a second?
So it's a referral to Plan Commission.
Second.
Okay, any conversation? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the role, please, on this reform?
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye. All right, uh, Alderman Fisk, uh, referral to the plan commission to look at rezoning a section of her ward passes on a nine to zero vote, so that'll go to the plan commission. Uh, Alderman Wilson, could you lead us into executive session this evening?
Sure. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, sign L C S one twenty slash two A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss an agenda item regarding, or agenda items regarding personnel. The agenda items are permitted subject to be considered in executive session and the enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act is exception five I L C S one twenty slash two A C one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seeing that discussion, city clerk, could you take the role?
Alderman Ravel? Alderman Ravel?
She's an aye, but we couldn't say it, yeah.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you, clerk. On a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council is recessing uh, into executive session. Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out.